You're all set, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to Town Council, Barnstable Town Council meeting, this is May 6th, 2021, and it is currently 7:04. Everybody who has a council, if you could turn on your cameras, that would be great, and we are remote due to COVID, so we are attending this meeting remotely. And in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Not hearing any, I would like to do the roll call, please.
Counselors, appsless. Bogan.
President.
Clark.
Here.
Dag one.
Here.
Rep. Garcetti.
President.
Hebert.
President.
Levek.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Dar.
Here.
Don Hilber.
Here.
Council Appsless has.
I have 10.
I'm here.
Council Appsless has joined us.
Okay, I have 11.
Thank you. If we can all now please stand and mute our microphones. Our very own Council Clark will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would just like to remember, if everybody is driven by the Rotary, Route 132, Ms. Denise Harris, who lost her dad to COVID just a little, about a month or so ago. She did a great job and did a great tribute to all those who have lost their lives to COVID here on Cape Cod. And that tribute was a place in place, and I just wanted to recognize that. And I also wanted to recognize, I mean, Reardon, who is the wife of Honorable Joseph Reardon, and longtime Centerville resident, and raised eight children, many grandchildren, here on Cape Cod, and I just want to remember her. And also too, I wanted to turn the microphone over to Council Dag One, who is somebody I'd like to mention as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this moment of silence, I'd like to also thank all the town council members who called me and left me cards in Texas concerning the future death I had with my family. But tonight I want to mention a very important employee here in the town, he passed away, her name was Jean Lawson. Jean Lawson was a school teacher at Barnstable High School. And she taught for 23 years, beginning in 1981. And it was a lifelong dream, a message that her daughter sent. She taught English, US History, Social Studies, Psychology, and her daughter said her students finally called her Mean Jean Lawson, because she didn't play around, but they loved her as a teacher. She always taught at Barnstable High School, but really started at Head Start in Dennis for receiving her degree. She also worked with the Boy Scout Camp in Yarmouth. During the summer, she was a cook for them. She was a member of the DH, the Department of Children and Family Services, as a mentor to many young children who were homeless or whose parents were going through hard times. I remember Jean taking in quite a few people at that time. When I asked people about her, the first thing everyone said, and when I, when I thought about her first, she was that she was tall. She was very tall, that, that was a woman, and worked very diligently at the high school in trying to bring about diversity among the staff and among the students. And I think the other thing, somebody I asked about me, said that she was a booty. So I just ask people questions about her, but what I mainly wanted to say is that, you know, just keep her family in prayer. Her daughter contacted me, and she had been through a long illness, but the fact that she worked here in the town, I thought it was important that she be recognized tonight, and that people, we keep the family in prayer.
We also wanted to recognize Council Hebert, who also wanted to make your point.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to honor our good friend, Dr. Roger Shabro, who passed away at the end of April, is a very well-respected local surgeon, worked very, very hard for the hospital. Was very much involved in civic and community organizations, very kind man, loved by many, and he cared for many. I'd like to recognize that, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to observe a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I would like to open up the floor, say the line for public comment. Do we have anybody who can put a comment, please?
Evening, this is Lynn, and our first public comment is Whitney McNamara. Whitney, you have three minutes, if you could unmute, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Whitney McNamara, I am a resident of Hyannis. I first want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight, and to allow me to speak during public comment on not only the accessory dwelling unit by law change, but also the potential task force. I, like many young professionals, left the gate for college, came back many years later. And if it wasn't for the housing situation I have now, I would not have been able to stay here on Cape Cod. I would not have been able to afford affordable housing. And when I came back, I started volunteering and getting involved in meeting all these great young professionals over the last five years, and many of which have left the gate because they couldn't afford to live here because they couldn't afford affordable housing, or they couldn't get an affordable wage to be able to stay. And we were in a housing crisis before COVID, and now saying that is an understatement. We need to do everything we can as a community to create more housing stock so that people can still afford to live and work here. And allowing for accessory dwelling units would allow for more one and two bedroom homes. I was, before COVID, in the position with my fiancee to potentially buy a home. That's no longer the case. And when I say that in the past few months, many of our searches brought up zero homes in the town of Barnstable, that is not an exaggeration, there was nothing in our price market we could afford. And even now, it is very low, and there are not a lot of opportunities. And when we do have the opportunity to buy a house, we would like to have an accessory dwelling unit, not only to help with the housing challenges we have on Cape Cod, but to help us afford that home and be able to stay here in the long run. And again, anything we can do to help people stay on Cape Cod and create more housing is important, especially where the accessory dwelling unit by law change doesn't change really the structure of the water waste system, or the sewer system, or the septic system, which is really important to our community as well. And that being said, I am against the task force. I think having a public hearing or allowing public comment would allow a lot of young professionals like myself, who are very busy with work and extracurriculars and volunteering. We don't necessarily have the time to donate to a task force, but we would have the opportunity, hopefully a night like tonight, to step up and share our opinions, especially for those who have young children. Asking for one night compared to a task force is something a lot more attainable, and I think would allow for a larger range of voices. So I thank you again, and I thank you again for allowing me to talk on it now, rather than later, on both the accessory dwelling unit by law change and the potential task force.
Thank you, Ms. McNamara. Have a great evening.
You as well.
Next up, we have Megan Mort, Megan, you have three minutes, if you could unmute now.
I, I just wanted to echo Whitney's statements, we share a lot of similarities in the housing issues. I'm just looking forward to seeing some action taken on the ADU bylaw, and I'm going to reserve my comments on the residential zoning task force until the hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Have a great night.
You too.
Next up, we have Rick Wrightson, Mr. Wrightson, please unmute, you have three minutes.
Is he in the room?
See him.
Director Point, is he in the breakout room, maybe?
Trying to locate, I have seven people right now on this list, and I'm trying to find them.
There he is.
There he is.
Hi, Mr. Wrightson, welcome.
Good evening, thank you very much, and I am calling in to speak on the task force petition. And what I'd like to say is I hope that the town council gives us a good hearing, and I.
Oh, he's muted.
You muted yourself.
Sorry, sorry. I thought I was a tech guy, too. I just, I was just saying that I hope that town council gives us a serious consideration, and I seriously hope that they pass this petition, it's very important to the town that the residents have a voice in, in, in giving the council some advice. And I think this is a good way to do it, when each of the precincts is represented, and taxpayers and property owners are represented. And so that's what I had to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wrightson, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tina Carey, you may unmute, you have three minutes.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to ask some questions about the closing of the street, and why it didn't go before the Hyannis Historic Commission to be voted on, they voted last year that it was a temporary thing when the COVID-19 advisory was lifted. And I don't know why we're doing it this year, because there's no mask mandate outside anymore. We need our, we need our sidewalk for people to walk on, and we need our parking places very badly. The traffic is horrendous now, and the season has not even begun, there's going to be a gridlock to get on Main Street like we've never seen, you know, back in the 60s, they made Main Street one-way, two-lanes because of the backup all the way to Yarmouth. So we're going back, you know, 60 years here, and, you know, undoing what they did back then. They used to change all the streets, Main Street was two ways in the winter, but in the summer, it was two lanes going one way to keep the traffic flowing. I just still don't understand who's making these decisions, it seems like the bid and Elizabeth Jenkins are running this town. And why isn't the town council voting on this? You seem to be completely removed from it, I mean, this is a public sidewalk and a public street, why aren't you voting on it? I mean, I watched the historic meeting last night, and why is Elizabeth Jenkins representing the bid? The bid applicant doesn't even show up, and they vote, I've never heard of them voting on an applicant that doesn't show up, they usually say, well, we'll take it to the next meeting when the applicant can, can appear. And this has happened more than once, where town employees are representing the bid, so does the bid work for the town now? I mean, why don't we just let them work for the town and release all the merchants from their, you know, their liens that they're putting on everybody's property, I'd love if you made the bid a town agency to release us from this oppression that we're under. So if someone could answer that question, why are town employees representing the bid? And I've been telling you for eight years, the problem with the Historic Commission is not the people on the commission, it's the conflict of interest with the bid. You still have two bid members sitting on that board, and they're voting for people who owe the bid money, it is a conflict of interest, it should not exist.
Ms. Carey, could you please wrap up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
Next up, we have Bill Lamontainen, Mr. Lamontainen, you have three minutes, if you could unmute.
Did you get any of that yet?
No, sir, but I can hear it now.
I just got the button, so it took a minute to get it. Good evening, my name is Bill Lamontainen, I was born in Hyannis and have lived in the town for over 70 years. I would like to speak to you regarding the proposed task force on zoning proposals, and the proposal to implement accessory dwelling units in the town. First, the creation of accessory dwelling unit is a benefit to all residents of the town, top to bottom. As pointed out in the draft article, it would provide rental units, which are so desperately needed, and rental income for seniors to cover expenses in their retirement year. This is long overdue, and would be such a benefit to the citizens of the town. To those opposed to having accessory dwelling unit, I would suggest not having one. Just please don't restrict the rights of others to have one. In regard to the task force, I think it is totally unnecessary, and another example of micromanaging, the draft proposal already addresses the concerns I hear raised, such as prohibiting short-term rentals by outlawing them. Also restricting the ADU to two adults, 18 and over, two bedrooms, maximum 900 square feet of 50% of the main house living area, having to stay within septic and building code regulations, and myriad other controls are in place in the proposal. The implementation of a task force just adds another layer of bureaucracy and delays the benefit to the resident. Do us all a favor and legalize freedom. I urge you to defeat the task force proposal and pass the accessory dwelling unit zoning proposal with all due haste, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamontainen.
For the comment is Patricia Farina, Ms. Farina, I don't know where you went.
I'm right here.
Okay, it's your turn for public comment, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, I am Patricia Farina, a resident of Hyannis, and have been a member of the Shellfish Committee for three years. At the March 10th Shellfish Committee meeting, we evaluated a notice of intent which was filed by Stephen Cohen, seeking to construct a timber boardwalk, pier, ramp, and float at his newly acquired property at 209 Bay Street, Osterville. The property is adjacent to the town way to water and a recreational shellfish habitat, which is rated 10 out of 10 by the Department of Natural Resources. The Shellfish Committee recommended that it be turned down, and Stuart Rapp, the committee chair, followed up with a letter to the Conservation Committee stating our concern as to the negative impact this dock threatens on a healthy recreational and commercial shellfish habitat. On March 30th, the Conservation Committee voted 4 to 2 approval for Mr. Cohen's dock, with one committee member responding disgusted when he cast his vote. Construction of piers and the subsequent boat activity caused re-suspension of nutrient-laden sediment particles, which when released, contribute to algae growth. For example, the growing rust-colored algae blooms that we see every summer along our shoreline, and spreading out across the bottom of the bays where we wade in to go shellfishing or swimming. Not a pleasant experience anymore, this algae blocks sunlight which the life below needs to survive. Protecting public resources for the benefit of public recreation is a town responsibility and a public trust. The ocean is no one's private property, and although the property owners maintain ownership to the mean high water, they also have a stewardship responsibility for the adverse impact they will impose on a protected resource. We generally refer to the state's passover property as the pursuit of fishing, filing, and navigation. However, what happens when the fish or the shellfish, as in this discussion, no longer has a healthy habitat to grow in? Shellfish provide many public beneficial functions, food, recreation, employment, and a filtering capacity to decrease nutrient levels in our estuaries. In other words, they help to clean the water of nitrogen. All of our committees need to work together to protect our shellfish habitat. There is no conservation in permitting docks which contribute, contribute to our town coffers, while at the same time degrade our natural and essential shellfish habitat. Thank you for listening to me, good night.
Thank you, Ms. Farina, you have a great night. Appreciate your time.
Next for public comment is Alan Felton, Alan, you can unmute, you have three minutes.
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you, Alan.
Okay, I don't know if you can see me, but Alan Felton from Hyannis, I just wanted to briefly say that I am in support of the concept of having early citizen participation in the zoning discussions. Apparently, that is not always the case, and sometimes things happen, and then we find out when it's too late. So that is the comment I wanted to make tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next for public comment is Susan Roerbach, Susan, you can unmute, you have three minutes.
Thank you, I'm Susan Roerbach, I live in Centerville, and I'm, I'm a board member at Housing Assistance Corporation. First, I'd like to speak about the zoning task force. I signed the petition, but I have since changed my mind. And I signed it because I knew that people were upset about the short-term rentals, zoning issues, and that they didn't feel that they had been heard, and I had some similar concerns myself. But I've since, it, since then, it seems to have become some sort of a thing, where some people think that other people want it for only negative reasons, and there's a lot of back and forth about it, and I just don't think we need that. We have a board that works on zoning, it's the planning board, we have the town council, and they work on zoning as well. But I, I really think that it would, should be incumbent on those two boards to reach out and get, and engage more people in general, rather than another, a small group of people who won't necessarily be accountable to, to anybody. I, I would suggest using the civic associations, but not exclusively, because the civic associations don't always represent everybody in the community. And then the second thing that I'd like to talk about is ADUs. And I, I see that you're referring something to the planning board, please, let's do this. You know, it works in a lot of communities, I've lived in a community where they were common, and the homes were much closer together, and it really wasn't a problem. I do, however, differ from some of my patriots in, in our, the housing field. I do like the, the owner occupied option, but I have, after a conversation today, been pretty much persuaded that something that says that both units can't be rented at the same time would provide that both the access to housing and the, and more housing, and would it also allow part-time residents to take advantage of the AD, of ADUs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan, appreciate your time, always.
Next up, we have.
Hi, Mr. Lima, you are, you are on, I'm sorry, Director Point, I cut out a little bit, so, welcome, thank you for being here, you have three minutes, please.
All right, thank you very much, my name is Joe Lima, and this is my husband, John Picard.
Hello.
And we live in Osterville, we've actually lived in Osterville since 1994. And we completely support the ADUs, and are opposed to the creation of a task force to study this issue any further. We feel that that will just simply delay providing the much-needed affordable housing that is needed by people in our community. That's pretty much it, just wanted to make our comment known, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Lima, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next for public comment, we have Tara Vargas Wallace, Tara, you have three minutes, if you could unmute.
Hello, I am a Hyannis resident, and I do not support the citizen petition calling for a resident zoning task force. I do not feel that another layer of red tape is needed when we already have the planning and development and zoning board. This proposed task force does not speak for me, and seems to be exclusive, exclusive of people of color, people with disabilities, or working families who simply do not have the time to make it to regular town council meetings, never mind the added pressure of a resident zoning task force meeting. We're all too busy struggling to raise babies and to survive working two or three jobs. So no, we do not need a resident zoning task force, what we need is more available housing for Barnstable residents, and with that said, I do support the ADU bylaw, and would like to get the ball rolling on that, so if you could kindly pass that, that would be great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas Wallace, appreciate your time, have a great night.
You too.
Next, we have Cindy Martin, Cindy, you have three minutes, if you could unmute, please.
Hi, trying to put my babies down to bed. As she said, there's not a lot of time to have an additional, there would just be another layer, a barrier for families to have, to have to attend another task force, so I am against.
Big one.
Sorry, I'm against the residential zoning task force as an additional layer.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Elizabeth Werfing, Elizabeth, because I'm mute, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Werfing, Executive Director of the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District, and I represent the downtown interests, and one of the best practices in the downtown, of course, is having housing for all types of ages and socioeconomic levels of people in the downtown, that makes for a really strong and resilient village center, it's a best practice. So why I'm here is to really promote a comprehensive economic development plan for the town of Barnstable that's updated, that is inclusive, that we all participate in, because we want to envision what our future is on Cape Cod, not just for us right this minute, but 10 years from now, and 20 years from now, and 30 years from now, and what do we want to see in the future? We know that one thing will happen in the future, is that everything will consistently change. And we can't depend on things staying the same or going back to the past. So we need a big plan, and we want to trust the town and the Cape Cod Commission together to help us, you know, pull it together with our input from all of you, everybody coming to this wonderful meeting tonight, and caring about their community, should participate, because housing is very important, clean water is very important, our ecology is very important, our future on Cape Cod with our young people and jobs are very important. And all of it should center around activity centers, and we should follow best practices, you know, and not just knee-jerk react, you know, to what's occurring right in front of our face at this very moment. So I'm, I'm a proponent of best practices, and I'd love to have the town council support a great economic development plan, and comprehensive plan, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Werfing, appreciate your time.
Next, we have Michelle Lombard, Michelle, you have. Next, we have Michelle Lombard. Michelle, you have three minutes.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Hello, thank you. I'm Michelle Lombard from Marsens Mills. I hope you'll support the creation of a residential tap zoning task force for three reasons. First, trust between citizens and government officials are at the lowest point in memory and getting lower. Not just Barnstable, it's everywhere, and the only way out for all of us is collaboration. We have to work together. Let's get citizens off this three-minute comment timer we're on and give them a meaningful voice. Second, our homes are the biggest investments most of us will ever make. I know mine sure was. Zoning affects housing supply, affordability, and the stability of our homes and neighborhoods. There's no better first subject for real collaborative citizen engagement. And finally, openness and collaboration always create better results. Study after study shows diverse groups working together rely more on facts. They question their old assumptions. They listen better, and they'll come up with smarter ideas. I'm going to send you some of the research I have, and it's really enlightening. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Lombard. Appreciate your time. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next up for public comment, we have Mary Ann Barbosa. Mary Ann, if you could unmute, you have three minutes.
Unmute. Hi, sorry. You there?
Yes. Ms. Barbosa, you are.
Okay, hi. Okay, number one, in regards to the task force, please, no. Number one, we voted. The voting members of this community voted the town council in place. They do our bidding. If they are not doing what we ask, we step up and speak on it. And if they still don't do it, we remove them. When you hear a task force say, we're here for the whole community, then why, I mean, personally, say, I took the time to educate myself on this. Why is it that the petitioners only have homeowners? So, again, I'm angrier. Either they only know people who own homes, or they only want to know people who own homes. How is that including the whole neighborhood? Okay, we're not going down that road again. Been there, done that. You're not going to put people in, we want you over here, we want you over there. Part of the problem is some of the people who are trying to exclude. They make the rent so high that people who are born and raised forever here can't live here. They want us out. It's not happening. Now, the other thing is, when they talk about, the only thing I do agree with, we need more of a reaching out situation. But guess what? That started before the pandemic. And if they took the time to know the whole community, they would have known that Markells and other members of the council and the police chief. We had started going, they started going into the community, meeting with people, bringing up issues, talking to people, and the communities that some people say, oh, it's so scary. They were actually going into their homes, meeting with them. Everything had to be put on hold because of the pandemic. But we're not going backward, and if this committee gets put in place, I promise you, I'll knock on every door, I'll get every petition, and I'll start a committee to oversee the committee. As I told you, and some don't want to hear it, but someone said I was being racist. No, but it is discriminatory. What, you only have, what about the voters? They kept this community alive. So it only homeowners, I own my home, my brother paid his home off. But you still include everybody because everybody in this community that votes kept this community alive. So they don't have that right. And like I said, I'm gonna, my last words will be, as I said the last meeting, as a black woman and a native, we've heard those words before. Trust me, we're here for you. No, the council will do my bidding, and if they don't do it right, I'll get rid of them. Well, I mean, we'll put someone else in, but we don't need no overseers because you feel we're not intelligent enough. Goodbye. Thank you. I'm sorry if I sound angry, but that's how I feel, especially after learning more about it. So everybody have a good day, and I can't wait till this pandemic is over so we can sit in the room and express ourselves because this this Zoom thing doesn't work well for me, but I will give credit, and I I do want to make this very clear.
And they need Ms. Barbosa, can you please wrap it up?
Okay, I am real quick. Let's let me say this. And I want to make clear to the task force, when they say that people need to reach out, people are reaching out, and really, talk to Markells, talk to the police chief, talk to the president on the council, talk to some of your council members. You'll see that they have, we have set things up where they are going into the community, getting to know all of their community. You guys just have homeowners. So how, who's not being inclusive here? Let's really talk about this. Have a good one. Please don't do this. Goodbye. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Barbosa. Have a great night. Appreciate you.
Okay, I'm trying. Thank you. Bye.
Next for public comment, we have Chris Flanagan. Chris, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much, and I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Flanagan. I'm the Executive Officer of the Home Builders and Remodelers Association of Cape Cod, which is located in Centerville. And I'm here to represent three hundred and thirty member companies in the building industry that are throughout Cape Cod, and I'm really calling just to say that we are in full support of a of good accessory dwelling unit bylaw that creates more housing here on the Cape, more year-round housing. As you all know, cost of lumber have really skyrocketed. And so housing was already unattainable here on Cape Cod, and it's only gotten that much worse. And so develop any way that we can develop market-rate housing and to develop what's already been developed here on the Cape, since there are so few opportunities to develop or build on the Cape anymore, just because there's so little land left. I respectfully request that the council really consider and support a an accessory dwelling unit bylaw that enables for building and development of much-needed housing here in Barnstable and Cape Cod. Thank you very much for your time.
Next for public comment, we have Jessica O'Brien. Jessica, you have three minutes.
Hi there. My name is Jessica O'Brien. I am actually on Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee. I am the clerk, and I am on, you know, social media pretty often and looking into, there's a quite a few groups out there of people looking for homes to live in here on Cape. Many locals, many who have lived here their whole lives, and, you know, post-pandemic, we're seeing so such a need now, more so than ever. I mean, there's always been a need for affordable housing and allowing people who own homes that have an accessory dwelling unit on their property to rent that out to, you know, a a single mom and her son and daughter is so needed here on Cape Cod. Like I said, I'm I'm on those those Facebook pages, and people are constantly looking, and I'm out in the community every day, just talking to these folks. So I am in full support of you guys presenting this. I think it's to your planning board. And I wish the Oh, I'm sorry. I got my second COVID vaccine yesterday. I'm stumbling over my words. But I do, I do hope that you guys are able to get this passed. And I wanted to show my support. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Thank you for your time.
Next for public comment is Christian T. Christian, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council counselors. Always a pleasure. Let me get some video going if I can here. Maybe my computer is a little screwed up. There I am. You'll note that I'm sitting in my basement. I am one of the cantankerous short-term rental owners who we always used to hang out on Thursday nights. It seems as if the folks who used to encourage such hanging out are back at it again with the with an idea that can only be considered an attempt to change the rules because they didn't get what they wanted. Let's consider for a second that the town does want more opportunities. They want the short-term rentals to increase the tax base and allow folks to get some more work. And the ADUs are, it's such an easy when the additional the additional zoning group that that's being proposed here is an attempt to monopolize the marketplace of ideas. It's going to be an inside crew of 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 people who have the time to spend on these sort of things. These are not going to be the working masses of the towns that are out hustling every day. We've we've got to focus on putting food on the table. We don't have I I got two kids, and one of them has a severe disability. I I don't have that sort of time to invest in in ensuring that my property rights are not infringed upon by folks who 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 don't necessarily have their best, the the best thoughts of the town involved. They just don't want their 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 nicer nicer parts of town to change with the times. Before long, it's 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 going to become, there'll there'll be another subcommittee and another subcommittee. Why can't we trust the process that we have here with regard to the sign that capturing the signatures? I I keep my finger on the pulse of everything that goes on in this town. I didn't hear nothing about it, which I find strange. I was never posted online. It's almost as if it was being done in secret. I I love the comments made by Ms. Mary Ann Barbosa indicating that this was just homeowners. There was no diversity with regard to a number of other cultural aspects that occur within the town of Barnstable. I I find this alarming. I I hope the town decides not to participate this. I hope you push through these ADUs. I hope you have a great summer, and everybody stays safe. Thank you so much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Teague. Appreciate your time. Have a great night.
That's all for public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah Beal. Thank you, Director Foye, for your time and the recent people. At this point, I would like to open up the floor for responsive public comment. Who would like to go first? Wow, okay, not seeing any.
Sorry, I was a little late. Thank you very much. I do appreciate Shellfish Committee Member Patricia Farina for speaking out on behalf of the Shellfishery. I am the liaison to the Shellfish Committee. I appreciate that assignment, and I take it seriously. But over the years, as being a former employee for Natural Resources and and beyond, I've noticed that the quality and the quantity of shellfish habitat has decreased over time. Some of it is due to de-degradating water quality. Some of it is encroachment by increased docks and piers, and some by other competing uses. But in the end, the shellfish habitat is decreasing. We're not making new of it. So I appreciate Patricia's perspective, and I hope that we can elevate the significance of this unique resource that we have in our town, because
Council Clerk, you froze.
Yeah, she froze.
Council Clerk? One more moment. Not seeing any. Maybe we could just, we can come back to Council Clerk if necessary. Council Heber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. I just want to clarify to my understanding my my understanding of what we're doing tonight in regards to the citizens' petition. Following, I believe, our legal department's advice, that we're not here to debate the the format or what kind of task force it would look like. We're only going to be voting tonight on the merit of the petition. Therefore, if we accepted that, I believe there would be a workshop or a discussion or a committee assigned by the president to discuss with the task force their their form formation. But I believe tonight, we're only going to vote on did they show that there was substantial interest in doing some type of more citizens' engagement? That's going to be, I believe, a yes or a no. I just want to point that out. I I stand to be corrected if that's the case. And in no case have I heard from any group, any which way, that there is any opposition to ADUs. So I I feel badly that it's taken so long for us to even vote on the ADUs, but nonetheless, that's what it is. Of course, I thank everybody for coming out and speaking, no matter where they stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Heber. Any other council response? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I I wasn't going to speak with regard to the comments on the task force or on ADUs, but let me just say, I I echo the understanding of Councilor Heber. I haven't heard any opposition to ADUs, whether it be from the people that spoke tonight or people that assigned the petition, seeking the formation of the task force. And as far as the task force is concerned, I think I said this last time, and I was very happy to see Mr. Schulte appear. They simply said they wanted to have a voice because they were concerned that there were decisions that were being made in which the opinions of citizens were not being solicited. That's all they were looking to do was to have a seat at the table. I I dare say that if the current version of the ADU ordinance passes as it is, it's a reflection of what that group was looking for. And that was something that ensures that there is housing that is available to residents of the town. It is not something that creates an opportunity for investors and that it incents the use of these properties for long-term rentals. And as I said last meeting, I think you folks are talking past each other because it seems to me that you both have the same objective. I don't know if in comment with regard to Ms. Carey, but she said a few things that are of concern to me. And I would invite comment if if the town manager would would like, or or Director Jenkins. She's indicated that Director Jenkins represented the bid at a meeting, and she thought that was inappropriate. She also commented commented about a a couple of apparent what she thinks are conflict of interest of members of the organization. I wasn't entirely clear on those, but I'm not looking for comment on those, but perhaps a comment with regard to the bid and whether or not that is the usual protocol, because she seemed to suggest that that was not the way it has been done or the way that it should be done.
Town Manager Ellis, would you like to respond to that?
Good evening.
Direct through you, Director Jenkins, speak to it.
Good evening. Yes, Markell, Town Manager, and Elizabeth Jenkins, our Director of Planning and Development, is here. I'm not aware that we directly represent the bid, though it was the, I believe, and Elizabeth Jenkins, correct me if I'm wrong, it was the town that authorized the creation of the bid, and then the bid functions separately from us. The bid does work with us regularly, being the Business Improvement District along Main Street Hyannis. So it has been my understanding for that entire time in the several roles I've played that it is expected of us to work with those groups that exist. But I am not of the understanding that we proceed with applications or requests on their behalf. But I would let Elizabeth Jenkins speak to the details of whatever the most recent events were that triggered those comments. It's also my understanding relevant to Main Street Hyannis and the modifications that we've made during COVID that we did communicate with the Hyannis Historic. And it was my understanding that they were supportive through the emergency declaration of those efforts that we were doing on Main Street. That emergency declaration still stands. I know that Elizabeth Jenkins has been out on Main Street. We, I did specifically, I spoke with Ms. Carey. She's expressed her concerns, as she has to you. I've received the emails and have asked Elizabeth Jenkins to go out on Main Street. Um I've received the emails uh and have asked uh Elizabeth Jenkins to go out on Main Street and meet with the businesses before we made a decision relevant to continuing the effort to accommodate both uh vehicular traffic and pedestrian movement along Main Street. It's my understanding that though the outdoor um the outdoor requirements may be dropped in the coming days or weeks, um the the requirements interior still stand until some point in the future. Therefore, we would certainly want to continue working with our restaurants and retailers along Main Street um to provide any reasonable accommodation so that they can have a very um productive summer. And uh I would I would ask President Levesque that Elizabeth Jenkins is second on my agenda. Um and i i she's second and third, but second relevant to Main Street, summer twenty twenty-one. So I think she could, if you would like, continue any comment um, you know, relevant to this. This does fall under the authority of the town manager, not the town council, as far as approval of this. Certainly, if we were asking for funding from town council, um then it would require town council approval of those funds, but we are not. Thank you.
Thank you. You've been clearing up some misinformation. Um Council Rep. Seti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank the public for their engagement coming out tonight. Um with regard to Ms. Carey's comment about members of the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, per the uh code of the town of Barnstable, in the formation of that commission, um it's there shall be four members who are business owners or or uh resident owners or property owners of the district. So the fact that there are a couple of members that are members of the bid is not uh in conflict, but uh uh abiding by the the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Council Rep. Seti. Council Dagewan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to uh ask two things of the public. Um one, I know that we've been on the council board for twelve years now. And we're constantly trying to find better ways to communicate to the public. And we created a whole new committee, a a apartment now, the plan is doing a wonderful job and trying to communicate to the council and to the public. And I'm going to ask the public, those who call and say that, you know, they didn't know about it or they're not getting information, please give us some suggestions how we can reach you.
If you know, we're we're doing the best we can. And um I think you can help us. You can just give us some suggestions. Uh ladies and gentlemen, try to easier. Actually, I'd say um to bear with us with this process of the Zoom, uh it's very, very difficult to have these meetings in there. Um I was at the special meeting last week and I like when I uh could see the presentation, but I couldn't believe I was here. No, to see the presentation, I couldn't believe I was here. Uh I talked to the president today to start hearing that uh that I'm to do the this.
I I can't I can't understand Counselor Dagewan, her audio.
Maybe shut your video off. I think your audio may improve if you do that.
Counselor, can you hear me better now?
It's still kind of fuzzy.
If we're not just as far as speaking to them, um let's say the truth is a dumb. Um personally, it's still not appealing to the human. Uh I'm not entitled to my life. And I think that other than having, you know, the Zoom process, please bear with me. Because I attended the meeting last week, uh I might allow other after the Zoom process, the meeting, I couldn't hear. Um and I'm happy to, you know, to have it repaired. So I'm just bearing this, you know, the the Zoom process, but also give us some suggestions uh how we can better communicate with um with um with the public, uh the public, give us some.
Okay, Council Dagewan, just because I I just don't actually, your point that the fact that this difficulty with Zoom was was actually um proven through your phone call. And so we understand uh what you're trying to say. And I think the public understands too that you want to be make it understood that we are open for communication. And contact us anytime with suggestions on how to better communicate us us doing our jobs, the jobs we were elected to do, to reach out to the public, whatever which way we can. And um you know, and that would benefit the community and benefit, make them feel like they're being heard. So I appreciate that. And I just want you to understand that um you were heard. So it was a little fuzzy, but you were heard. Any other council comment? Council Clark, oh, you want to finish what you were saying? I I apologize. You froze and we just so we moved on. I apologize.
Understood, and that that's very reasonable. Sorry for my unstable connection here. I just wanted to um uh complete that um when it comes to shellfish habitat, you don't know what you got till it's gone. And and I appreciate Patricia Farina's comments, but thank you for letting me finish.
You're welcome. Thank you, Council Clark. And thank you, um Town Manager Ellis. I know that's going to get um like um Director Jenkins from the Town Manager Communication. Any other council comments, public comment? Council Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I I I want to echo my fellow counselors and thanking the public for coming out tonight. Um it's important for us to hear from you. And as Counselor Dagewan said, although it was difficult to hear, um we don't know all the right answers. If there are better ways for us to engage with you, please let us know. Um I know that uh our planner, Elizabeth Jenkins, will be addressing a little bit of the issues on Main Street. But I know that uh it is true, we work collaboratively with the bid. And if there are any questions um regarding conflicts of interest, um we'll be right on that. But I it it is designed to be a partnership, and that's the way that uh we are approaching it. So and I just wanted to also make sure that the public knows that uh we will be addressing the issues of the residential task force uh later in the agenda, and that will be a public hearing. Um if you didn't have a chance to make a comment, there will be an opportunity later tonight.
Thank you for that, Vice President. And again, I also want to reiterate that as well. Thank you very much for everything you've done and spoke, you know, um most eloquently, really, and um from the heart in regards to the issues um that we saw so whole. Any other council comment? Okay. Not seeing any. I would turn it over to uh Town Manager Ellis with Town Manager Communication, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark Ellis, Town Manager. This is the Town Manager's update uh for the period of April second through May sixth. Um first off, will be um Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn to provide an update relevant to municipal operations and activities as we progress through phase four of the COVID Recovery Plan.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Counselors. I'm Andy Clyburn, Assistant Town Manager. Here to give a brief update on our efforts relative to phase four of the COVID recovery. As I previously reported, we continue to lead the state in our rate of vaccination. Now with over half of the population fully vaccinated. Vaccine is readily available to anyone over the age of sixteen with rental concerns. There are still multiple pathways to vaccination. The one we are most intimately involved with is the clinic that we are running at the Barnstable Adult Community Center with Hyannis Fire Department and Harbor Health. Eight twenty-five Falmouth Road, facility previously known as our senior center. Nine AM to four PM Monday through Friday, walk-ins are welcome. We also continue to partner with Hyannis Fire Department and all of our fire departments on vaccinated homebound and those unable to access BACC or other pathways. A multitude of efforts are underway to get a shot to everyone who wants one. From going out to apartment complexes to pop up vaccination site site in all of our villages. As for state guidance, the Baker Plato Administration recently announced that Massachusetts will reopen some outdoor phase four step two facilities effective May tenth and put plans in place for further reopening on May twenty ninth and August first. The administration already relaxed the face covering order for some outdoor settings effective April thirtieth. Effective next Monday, April, I'm sorry, May tenth, large venues such as indoor and outdoor stadiums, arenas and ballpark will be permitted to increase their capacity to twenty-five percent. The Connewealth will reopen amusement parks, theme parks and outdoor water parks and permit them at fifty percent capacity. Road races and other large outdoor organized amateur or professional athletic events will be permitted to take place with staggered start times, submitting safety plans to local boards of health. Youth and adult amateur sports tournaments will also be allowed, as will singing uh permitted indoors with strict distancing requirements at performance venues, restaurants, event venues and other businesses. That's May tenth. And May twenty ninth, gathering limits will increase to two hundred people indoors and two hundred and fifty people outdoors for event venues, public settings, private. Additional um openings will be permitted, including street festivals, parades and agricultural festivals at fifty percent of their previous capacity after submitting plans to local board of health. Bars, beer gardens, breweries, wineries and distilleries will be subject to restaurant rules with seated service only and ninety-minute limit and no dance. Subject to public health file, vaccine data and restaurant guidance. Um it will be updated to eliminate the requirement for food to be served along with the Yeah, that's May twenty ninth. And lastly, August first, um remaining industries will be permitted to fully open. Dance clubs, nightclubs, saunas, hot tubs, steam rooms, fitness centers and indoor water parks will all be permitted. All industry restrictions will be lifted at that time. Capacity will increase to one hundred percent, all industries, with businesses encouraged to continue following best practice. The gathering limit will also be rescinded. The State Department of Public Health will also continue to issue guidance ne as needed, including guidance to still require face masks indoor. All of this information and more is available at mass.gov backslash reopen. Depending on the vaccination distribution and public health data, the administration also may consider reconsider reevaluate reevaluating that one August date. So the long and short of all of this is we're now entering a transitional phase. The next sixty to ninety days are going to be very interesting. We will enter the summer with many things looking much as they did in the summer of twenty twenty. And we will likely come out of the summer looking more like we did in the summer of twenty nineteen pre pandemic. We're currently looking at all town operations, activities. We're planning a phased reopening between now and August first pending public health guide. We're going to ensure consistency with the Governor Baker's state guidance. Um as we look to open access to all town buildings, utilization and consolidation of town assets, use of village buildings, proper operation of boards, committees and commissions, town-sponsored events and private events licensed private. If you want to hold an event, please look at the town website. Right in the middle, there's a tab called Quick Links, and there's a special event button that you can push that's everything that you need to know. Uh it's a great starting point and it'll it'll get you in our process where we have Liz Harstfield and others actively working to help us, help you um get any event that you want done. We're looking very closely at all ports of points of citizen interaction with government to make sure those are properly done as well. Permitting town clerk, assessor, tax collector, MAA and others. We plan to continue to leverage technology for online and contactless services where we've seen it work, such as MAA and Hootstik. Couple of questions we've been asked many times. Will there be a Fourth of July parade in Hyannis? No. Will there be a Fourth of July fireworks? Yes, we will have fireworks. There is a chance that they will be delayed until Labor Day. But if authorized, our intent at this point is to have a fireworks display this year. When will boards and committees start meeting in person? The answer to that is not later than August and hopefully soon. When will town council be in person? The answer to that is not later than the August meeting, and it's possible the July meeting. Our goal is to be ready on one July to start the new fiscal year. If we must wait on some some items until August because of state mandate mandate, that's what we'll do. That's what we've held with throughout the entire pandemic. Uh with that, I'll ask for any questions that you have and then turn it over to Elizabeth Jenkins, who's going to go a little bit more in-depth in this year's plans for Main Street Hyannis.
Thank you, Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn. Appreciate that update. Any other question? Just quick questions for um Town Manager Andy Clyburn from our council. I do like that idea of no later than August, but maybe sooner if we can make it happen. So I like those ideas. It would be great to actually meet in person. You know, we've discussed some sort of maybe a hybrid so people could still they don't feel comfortable or unable to participate via Zoom, uh but it would be great if we were able to to meet in person um to help those who haven't been able to participate um due to the um COVID pandemic. Any other counselor comments, questions? Okay, then we turn it over to um Director Elizabeth Jenkins, please.
Thank you, President Levesque, members of the public. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, here to provide you an update on Hyannis Main Street uh in the summer of twenty twenty-one. Uh last year, and share my screen. Last year, our community came together in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic um to make changes to Hyannis Main Street that would promote the public health and safety um as well as support the many small and local businesses we have on Hyannis Main Street. Um I think the summer was um was a fantastic success by all accounts. Um and as we moved out of the summer last year, we had a discussion with our business community on Main Street, and the consensus at that time was to evaluate whether or not we were going to do it again uh for this season. As Assistant Town Manager Clyburn notes, um we are in a transitional moment um right now on Hyannis Main Street. Um I mean uh we are in a transitional moment right now um on Hyannis Main Street where we're seeing some restrictions lifted. Uh but there are many that do remain in place. Uh we do also anticipate for the summer a preference for people to be outdoors uh in response to the configuration that we saw on Main Street last year. Um we heard many positive comments um about the atmosphere that was created on Main Street, the ability for people to mingle outdoors, uh the creation of a space that felt like it was meant for people and not for cars. Um that was a result of the street configuration, but also some of the investments that we had put in uh to the street prior to COVID, including the lighting that was supported uh by you, the town council, as well as our partners at the Hyannis Main Street Business Improvement District. Uh coming out of last season, we talked with merchants over the winter, uh including walking the street um with a number of business owners. We had a merchant meeting um earlier in the spring um to discuss plans for the season. We had a public comment period, and I personally communicated um with at least fifty business owners or managers on the street about the streetscape summer this about the streetscape changes this summer um in person, face-to-face uh managers and owners of businesses on Main Street. We also collaborated with, of course, the Business Improvement District, also um communicating with the Hyannis Chamber and the Hyannis Civic Association. So based on the results of this outreach, uh the recommendation was made um to execute the street shape streetscape changes um again this year, um but with some modifications. And um before before I roll that out and share my screen again, I just do want to take a moment to address the questions that Ms. Carey raised about Hyannis Historic. Um we did have a dialogue with Hyannis Historic as Town Manager correctly notes um that uh that they would look at and accept these changes through uh through the end of the stage of emergency. As we've seen here midstream, um we know that that might be coming. We make that might be coming to an end before the end of the season. Um I've been in communication within the last, I I would say forty-eight hours um with the Chair of that commission to sit down again and make sure we're all on the same page about what's happening on Main Street this summer. Um so again, the the plan is to roll out those streetscape changes uh again this summer, but with some modifications. We wanted to listen and respond to what we heard um from businesses. So bear with me. I'm going to try to share my screen again. Um can you all see that? I'm not going to go full screen because that seems to be creating a technical difficulty. So again, these were the results of last year. Um and again, you can see the ability for people to get outside, um mix and mingle outdoors, created that really positive environment. So uh this is the street configuration that's proposed for this year. Uh the same blocks uh will be modified starting at Center Street um with the run-up with the run- The same blocks will be modified, starting at Center Street with the run up with the run up here before Pleasant Street, all the way down the four blocks of Main Street to C Street where the configuration will end. One of the notable changes this year is we were able to accommodate parking on both sides of the street. That was one of the most frequent comments we got from merchants, especially retailers and those relying on takeout was that even though there was a good availability of public parking last year with people returning to work in person, they wanted to see if we could add as much parking on the street as possible. So you'll see this as an example here down on the West End where there will be parking on both sides of the street. And I'll just take a moment because these diagrams, while I've been looking at them for a month, can be a little hard to understand. So as similar to last year, there will be the the on-street parking as it always exists on the south side of the street. The one vehicular travel lane. In the northern vehicular travel lane, there will be either the expanded pedestrian space or the additional on-street parking. In the area that was previously dedicated to parking on the north side of the street, there will be a continuous expansion of the outdoor space. And then, of course, of course, the sidewalk, you'll see also we made accommodations to the barriers to make sure people can open their car doors and we will be adding expansions in between this these barriers. Just to make sure we have that visually contin- that visually continuous separation between vehicles and pedestrians. Again, like last year, we'll have a continuous ADA accessible pathway demarcated on the ground and we will install handicap ramps in any areas where there are concern about accessibility. Like the most exciting enhancement this year is the aesthetic improvement to the barriers. We did hear that again, while the atmosphere and environment was nice, the the blocks that were used while again creating a very safe separation between vehicles and pedestrians were had a rather functional appearance. So this year, those blocks will be designed with this pattern that you see here, both on the both on the vehicular side as well as the pedestrian side of the blocks. These enhancements, as well as various other enhancements to the street, including additional planters and additional lighting, were supported by a Mass DOT Shared Streets and Public Spaces Fund, which was awarded to the town to support this effort. Again, as the Town Manager stated, it is the it's the authority does fall under him, but before a block goes down on the ground, we want to make sure that we're communicating with you and with members of the public about this about this plan and what to expect. The plan is to install the barriers next week, beginning in the Monday to Thursday timeframe, weather permitting, that work will happen at night. I will also note that the racks that you see here that that add that design to the barrier will be will be added after those barriers are in place. So we see them go up. They will appear as they did last year with this added design coming coming within, we believe, two weeks later. And I'd just like to take a moment to recognize the efforts of my colleagues to bring this together again this year, particularly the police and fire chief, DPW and Dan Santos's crew, Town Engineer Griffin Boden and Sean Jones at Highway, as well as Elizabeth Hartsgrove, who did the grant writing as well as was behind a number of the aesthetic improvements. So that concludes my presentation on Hyannis Main Street and I'm happy to pause and take any questions you may have.
I shared the screen. Excellent. Thank you for that presentation. We got the Main Street update. Any counselor questions, comments, please? Council Shawna Singh, please.
I just wanted to say that I think the reps look great and I was really happy that we were able to get grant funding to make that improvement for the barrier.
Thank you, Council Shawna Singh. I would agree with you. Good use of the funds there to unify them. Any other council comment, question? Council Heber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you Director Jenkins. All the comments that I've heard was that everybody enjoyed Main Street and we're hoping that we're going to do something a little similar. It seems like you've increased the parking on both sides. So I think that's a good response to Ms. Carrie and perhaps other businesses that were concerned about that. And certainly the improvement on the block, the painting is beautiful. And I I think it was very, very festive. I I enjoyed every time I got to go anyways downtown last year. It was just for me, it was really special. So thank you for your good work on that. Thank.
Thank you, Council Heber. Any other council communications in regards to that? Okay, not seeing any. We'll continue with Director Jenkins and Town Manager.
Thank you, President Levesque. For my second report tonight, I would just like to provide an update on the local comprehensive plan we committed to the council as we move through this process to come in and provide you regular update. So I have a brief one for you this evening. I'm going to again to share my. Do you see that in full screen or no? Okay.
Full screen.
It's not. I can't. I'm sorry, I have two monitors. I'm just going to proceed. So again, Barnstable's Local Comprehensive Plan, this is an exciting effort. Again, just as a quick reminder, to define a long-term vision for our community by anticipating and guiding the rate of new development and coordinating it with capital facilities. A comprehensive plan is something that brings the community together to define the unique values we seek to protect and encourage balanced economic development. Doing an LCP is important because in addition to articulating this vision and growth policy, it helps all of us coordinate, guide and balance our policy decisions related to development, infrastructure, the economy and resource protection. This is especially important at this moment as we put our time and effort behind implementation of our comprehensive wastewater management plan to think about and plan for the land use and development impact that that may have. So to date, the Planning and Development Department has been working on existing conditions, data and background for this plan. I do believe, and I read a lot of local comprehensive plans, that too many local comprehensive plans skip over a real reflection, a meaningful reflection on the background and history in a community. I think, you know, how how can we come together and and plan for a vision for our future if we don't take a moment and reflect how we've gotten here by again, looking, looking back and providing that summary. So everybody who comes to the table to engage in this process comes with some sense of the same experience relative to how we've seen growth and development happen in Barnstable. So we have been working on these histories and we plan on collaborating with Channel 18. So these stories get told, not by us as staff members, but but as members of the community. Also, as come up at a prior council meeting, looking at an evaluation of the goals and actions in the prior local comprehensive plan. And we have been working with the Cape Cod Commission on existing conditions mapping through a technical assistance program. The Cape Cod Commission is a tremendous source of data for all communities in the region. So we have started started in earnest on doing some preliminary existing conditions mapping and creating a platform, one that again will be accessible to all residents where they can that they can use to help understand where our community is at today, but also thinking about how can we use this platform beyond this particular planning process? We're going to put a lot of time and resources into creating some of these tools. I think we should be thoughtful about designing these tools in such a way that we can use them to evaluate our process in the future. Again, so our local comprehensive plan becomes a living plan and not one that that we all engage in and then and then walk away from. So as we develop these tools, we're being thoughtful about their longevity. We've been also working on scope and services for the consultant that that you previously supported. We have this scope ready to ready to move to procurement. So we'll be doing that consultant selection next. There will be a period of onboarding as well as data collection and presentation, LCP as well as the LCP committee formulation formation, excuse me, as soon as we as soon as we have that consultant on boarded. And then hopefully with the rollback of restrictions, we can begin engaging with residents directly. Of course, continuing that data collection process, but also in our initial stages of community outreach. And again, although we have not engaged our consultant relative to a lot of the dialogue that we just heard at public comment, we've been doing our own research on best practices around inclusive community engagement. We want to make sure that our community engagement process is designed. So it includes voices at many different levels from speaking one-on-one with individuals in neighborhoods to doing townwide community service surveys, making sure that people can hear each other and each each other's ideas. So meeting in small groups like focus groups, meeting in larger groups like town hall, making sure that there are plenty of ways where people can get engaged depending on their time and their ability to to dedicate to this process. So looking at a community engagement process that will have a lot of options for people, whether it be web-based, using a telephone or in person. And also I do agree with comments that were made that I I personally think that some of the best way to engage people is meeting them where they're at. I think often with plans like this, we expect people to come to us, to town halls and things like that. I think a part of this process needs to be meeting people where they are already gathering through their communities and their community of interest, such as civic associations, community groups, business professional associations, schools and events. We've also been looking at making sure we have, and again, developed in conjunction with our consultants, agreed upon standards for community engagement. And these are just some examples. But for example, if we're going to do digital engagement, making sure that that has the ability to be translated that, you know, they know that there's someone here at town hall or on their local comprehensive committee that they can talk to, that people have, you know, the ability over time to be able to, you know, to participate in something that's online. And the same thing for in-person engagement, making sure that everything is open to the public and accessible and that we're thinking about people with children. And, you know, these are just some examples. But having these agreed upon standards upfront. So so again, overriding, you know, I think our overriding goal here is of course to produce a product and a deliverable. But, you know, as we've seen tonight, I think this is a process that's ultimately designed to build public trust for us to all come together around what our community is going to look like in the future. And I, you know, I don't think this process can be successful unless we take the time and have this dialogue to make sure that there is public confidence and trust in this process. So again, at this point, I do think it's important to point out relative to that, that that we did design this in two ways. The first part being looking at these data and existing conditions. So again, we're all coming to this conversation with some sense of of the same information, but we are doing a community visioning session upfront. You know, there are a lot of issue-specific topics and actions that I think we see and we hope to we hope to produce through this process. But this initial community visioning process is again about bringing everybody to the table and and setting out these agreed upon standards about our values and what we want to see for our future. When it comes to targeted actions like things like zoning changes, you know, developing out our performance measures, you know, we we will see those things later in the process. I also think it's important to note what will happen concurrently because ultimately this plan is about coordinating and solidifying the interrelationships between the many plans and policies that we have in place today, including our town council strategic plan. Obviously, at the forefront, our comprehensive wastewater management plan, but many others that are out there as well. So I do think it's important to note that, you know, this is our priority and our focus, but we will have other plans and projects that will happen concurrently, of course, implementation of our comprehensive wastewater management plan. We are ready to roll out a complete streets policy for your consideration and the public planning process around that. You know, we are midway through an economic development plan to help support Hyannis Main Street and a resuming effort associated with this. We do again, we do again anticipate these efforts to continue to move forward. And again, the local comprehensive plan being designed to make sure that they, all of these efforts, again, whether it's it's, you know, these, you know, these particular planning projects or, you know, any number, any one of the number of policy decisions that we make every day at the Board Meeting Commission level through, you know, through the financial decisions that we make from the grants that we pursue. Again, will continue to happen, but we look forward to again supporting and prioritizing the local comprehensive plan to bring cohesion in our relationships and consistency between all these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Appreciate your time. And, you know, great update on that and where we're going and where we're going to be moving forward in regards to that. The when when I took over, or I should say, when myself and Vice President Shep took over leadership this coming, this beginning of this year, the one of our first questions is how can we engage the community? How can we, you know, and we were aware that it was, you know, a little bit overdue that we, you know, embark upon the local comprehensive plan. You see, would have been very difficult to do if we did it last year, but knowing that we were going to be coming out of COVID, knowing that this is an opportune time to engage our public in all different ways. And again, as I've said before, the if anything we've learned over the past year and a half or so is that there's an uninvolved, unincluded, underrepresented part of our community that we need to reach. And I love what you said, Director Jenkins, about meeting them where they are and going where they meet, going to the places where they go. So that this is like was mentioned during public comment, people don't necessarily have the time to separate themselves and and go and make time to go to an extra thing, you know, to make sure that their voice is heard and that they're represented. So actually simplifying things was a goal of myself and Vice President Shep moving forward where we've sunsetted the ad hoc and the presidential committees as of this end of this fiscal year. We're going to get wrap-up reports and a lot of the tasks that they were assigned have been completed. And now we need to focus our resources on this local comprehensive plan. That's the plan. That this will be the ultimate deal-to-basket, so to speak, where we can collect data, collect information and collect citizen engagement and reach out in a greater way, quite honestly, that hasn't been done in years because of the type of plan this is. Not a fault of anybody necessarily. The way this is designed is to do that ultimate grab of information from our community. And again, engage people who maybe not didn't have a voice before, but now they do because times have changed. I'll just bring up the Brazilian community. Brazilian community is a much different place than it was 10, 15 years ago when we did this plan before. Now they're, you know, it's they own more businesses, they're more, and they're an enormous part of our population. So we need to reach that. That's just one example. There's many examples, but that would be one of them. So I appreciate the vision on this. I appreciate you allowing myself and Vice President Shep and all the counselors and leadership, you know, Town Manager else to participate in this. And I really look forward. I'm really excited about what this is going to go and how we're going to use this to bring our community together. Any other counselor comment, question?
Thank you very much, President Levesque. And thank you, Director Jenkins, for your presentation. Will this PowerPoint presentation be available on the town council's website where it says presentations?
Yes, ma'am. I sent all my presentations to Ms. Level and I believe they are posted there. So.
That's terrific. And if I may suggest if they can be listed by date, because I've noticed when I've scrolled through them, it's sorted, I think, by by the date that they have been entered. So the most recent is on the bottom. I I think that it might be easier for the public to retrieve more recent presentations if possible. Uh, more recent presentations, if possible. And um I applaud you for um going where the people are. I think that means. Uh, maybe as um assistant uh um town manager Clyburn mentioned about opening up. Uh, with our phases after August first. That it may mean bringing representatives from um to conduct the surveys to festive. Local festivals and parades and community housing places and other events. Including going to playgrounds on weekends or doing things in the evening. So. Working in non-traditional work hours to find the people who are are um able and willing to um. Give um some different perspective, expanded perspective to our local comprehensive plan. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Council Representative, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Elizabeth. I I think this is exciting. I, you know, this comes around uh every decade. And I think this is a a wonderful opportunity. For the entire town of Barnstable to be come engaged and help to shape. The future of our community and what what that will look like. And uh and the fact that you talked about having the uh the past inform the future, I think that's critical. Um, you know, we don't want us uh remain stagnant. We want to see change. We want to see. Um, vibrancy in all of our seven villages. And I know um I'm I'm gonna be uh. Um, fairly vocal uh with regard to uh my precinct and wanting to see some some changes with regard to. Um, perhaps uh uh promoting some more business be put in the village. Um, and as we've lost our business center, which could to it used to be a bustling uh village. So. I'm excited about this and and I hope everybody in the town of Barnstable sees it as an opportunity to help shape. Uh, our future and our future for our children. If if you would just talk to me about the committee formation and what you see that, how you see that uh coming about.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So um, so again, we we did uh speak to the council about this. Um. The previously uh the Cape Cod Commission guidance uh for local comprehensive plans uh does. Does ask us, which we will follow um in development of this uh of this plan and planning process. Um, does direct, as does the the corresponding state statute, to have a local comprehensive planning committee. Um, that essentially is responsible for development of the plan. Um, so as noted before. Um, we wanted to make sure that uh again, we had a a full understanding of the best practices of putting these committees together. Um, so we will do that. Upon onboarding of our consultant. Um, but again, some of I think the uh the considerations we will want to. Um, we will want to um. Uh, have as we put this to make committee together is thinking about the various issue areas in the regional policy plan. Um, that the uh that the local comprehensive plan is going to respond to. And making sure that we have voices on that committee that bring experience um in those issue areas. That represent diversity, of course, having um having all of our villages represented, um having. A group that's manageable in size, um but that does represent a cross-section um of our community. In terms of um in terms of their participation and in terms of actually putting that committee together. Um, a close read of the Cape Cod Commission Act does give the town manager the authority um to. To appoint those members. But as we've previously discussed, um we want to make sure that those. Selections are done collaboratively with the council and ultimately ratified by the council. So we start this process together with consensus.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Representative, and thank you, Director Jenkins, for that. Any other counselor questions? Oh, Councilor Adams. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so moving forward, uh Town Manager Ellis, who'd like to continue to report this.
Thank you, and thank you, Assistant Town Manager Clyburn and um Director Jenkins for your presentation. We are proceeding with the task in the budget action calendar for FY twenty twenty-two as scheduled. We plan to distribute hard copies of the FY twenty twenty-two proposed operating budget to the town council on Monday, May eleventh. The electronic version of the document will be posted on the website, May eleventh as well. The first reading of the budget appropriation orders will be on the town council's May twentieth agenda. At which time Mark Mill, Director of Finance, will provide a summary of the proposed FY twenty twenty-two operating budget. Public hearings on the budget will commence on June third. Our comprehensive comprehensive financial advisory committee is in the process of preparing a report. On their review of the budget, which will be issued to the town council prior to the public hearing. The proposed general fund operating budget of a hundred and eighty-two point five million is an increase of one point five percent over the approved. FY twenty-one budget. The proposed operating budget includes all enterprise funds. Um, that that amount is two hundred and thirteen million dollars. That's a one point eight percent increase over the FY twenty-one budget. General fund fixed costs total sixty-four point nine million, a net increase of forty-six thousand. The school operating budget totals seventy-five point seven million, an increase of a little over a million dollars. And the proposed municipal operation budget of forty-one point nine million is increasing by one point six six million dollars. As you remember, the FY twenty twenty-one municipal operating budget included a million dollars in reductions. From the twenty twenty approved budget. Those reductions were made in anticipation of COVID-related financial pressures. As the town's financial situation due to the pandemic has stabilized. Mainly as a result of federal stimulus funds, we are able to resource some of the reductions. Made to the FY twenty twenty budget as well as address the increase in operating costs to existing service levels. As a result, the proposed municipal operating budget for FY twenty twenty-two of. Forty-one point nine million is only seven hundred thousand dollars more than the approved FY twenty twenty operating budget of. Forty-one point two million dollars. Equalling an average percentage increase less than one percent per year over that two-year period. Um, just a reminder, we're we're trying to get back to level of service budgeting rather than. Um, you know, um, zero but zero increase, no increase. And um, so so that's what you're gonna see coming forward to get back to. A level of service, though we won't accomplish all of that in twenty twenty-two. On March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, at ten AM, the town manager held the fiscal year fee hearings for fiscal year twenty-two. The proposed fee changes with the for the Department of Public Works Water Supply. Water Pollution Control and Solid Waste Division. The town manager fee hearing has been closed and the fee changes approved. As proposed for the Water Pollution Control Division and as approved with modifications. For the Water Supply and Solid Waste Divisions. And that modification is a reduction in the original proposed fee increase. The approved fees have been posted on the town website under Town Manager Fees. And for more information, you could look to our website um to see all available information. On May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, the town council held a special town council meeting. On a proposed sewer assessment ordinance as part of the fiscal policy under consideration by the town council. To establish how to equitably distribute the remaining cost of the comprehensive wastewater management plan. The town manager proposed to the town council, the town manager proposal to the town council included the following. First. Review and approve the proposed sewer assessment ordinance, which includes a sewer assessment to each. Individual property receiving the planned sewer, followed by a second discussion. On the use of general funds to pay for the remaining portion of costs associated with proceeding with the CWMP. The second reading and public hearing on the proposed sewer assessment ordinance is planned to be held on May twentieth, twenty twenty-one. At the town council meeting. I will note that one of the discussions we had at that meeting was relevant to um having a workshop. And communicating with our Board of Health. Uh, uh, I have scheduled myself to attend the May eleventh Board of Health hearing at three PM. I intend to discuss four major topic and certainly make the offer of of a future workshop. Um, relevant to to any or all of the topics I'm going to bring up. With town council. And as always, myself and staff are available for our Board of Health. Um, but the four major topics are hookups of existing customers and how the Board of Health is proceeding relevant to that. Hookups of future customers. Um, and that seems to be a focal point for the potential workshop with town council in the future. Innovative and alternative systems and the management of those for our community moving forward. And designation of nitrogen-sensitive areas throughout our community. So the it'll just be in a a a um. It won't be an introductory because we have had these conversations in the past, but it will be a continuation. Of the priority of of these topic. And I expect uh that our Board of Health, as always, will work closely with us as we move forward on these very important. On May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, we received a notice of subsidy from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. That Barnstable is qualified projects listed on the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one Clean Water State Revolving Fund Intended Use Plan. These commitments um represent a twenty-five percent subsidy for projects. With a cost greater than a million and fifty percent subsidies for projects less than a million. The fund board also voted and awarded subsidy for pre-existing wastewater-related debt not associated with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. The town of Barnstable has been awarded subsidies for these pre-existing debt as well. So this is good news across the board. On April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, we received notice from the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust. That Barnstable's Water Supply Division, this is the Hyannis Water Supply, received a total of eight hundred and fifty-six. Thousand plus in principal forgiveness on state revolving fund loans. And the trust waived the origination fees, which were seventy-three thousand on these loans. One loan issued was for zero percent. The other was for two point two percent. Uh, the it was extended over twenty-five years. The the reduced cash flow allowed the Water Supply Division to reduce the FY twenty-two rates by two percent. And that's earlier I alluded to the approval of the rates as proposed. There were initially a seven percent increase. We were able to um reduce that to a five percent. As a result, direct result of of this uh the this um subsidy that we've received. So it's greatly appreciated. Good work, staff. That that being finance and DPW. Funding from the new coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund created by the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Will be distributed directly from the federal government to CBDG entitled communities within the coming week. This is seven point one million dollars to Barnstable. Staff has taken the necessary steps as provided by the federal government. In order for the town to receive the first payment under this program. We anticipate the first round of funding to be received by the end of next week. The guidance on use of these funds is expected to be released with the first payment. I plan to have further discussions regarding strategy on the use of the funds with Mark Mill and Andy Clyburn, then-town council leadership. Uh, right now, a suggested approach would be would have three tiers. Tier one, additional cost incurred as a result of the public health. Requirements that are on us during COVID. Tier two, replacement of lost revenue. Tier three, one-time expenses for capital outletting. And we'll keep you advised as we receive additional information. Relative to the American Rescue Plan Act funds being distributed to Barnstable County. On behalf of the communities in Barnstable County, it's forty-one million dollars for Barnstable County. I've offered Beth Albert, Barnstable County Administrator, to work with the county to achieve equitable distribution. Upon receipt of eligibility guidance um of said funds. And we'll keep you advised as we receive additional information. We continue with the regular conversations with Vineyard Wind regarding the status of Phase One and Phase Two projects. Vineyard Wind continues to work with Barnstable staff regarding both phases of the project. They anticipate commencing on Phase One in twenty twenty-one or proceeding with permitting on Phase Two. Vineyard Wind has notified the town that their contractor shall commence test pit pourings along the route of cable installation for Phase One construction. Now. We have continued our discussion with Vineyard Wind regarding an update to the host agreement for Phase Two. And a host agreement for potential Phase Three, and we'll keep you advised as this project progresses. On April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, Brian Florence, Director of Inspektional Services and our Building Commissioner. Submitted to the Mass Board of Building Regulations and Standards a request for building code amendment. In addition to the work done by the Building Commissioner addressing the alternative compliance with the Building and Energy Code. Staff continues to work with its grant-funded consultants through the Cape Light Compact. To complete the other aspects of seeking green community designation. A draft energy reduction plan resulting from over forty-five building audits is being finalized for presentation and endorsement. The base year of two thousand and nineteen for energy use is currently being used to develop a twenty percent energy reduction goal over the next five years. Likewise, a green vehicle policy that met the requirements of the green community designation process is being finalized. In this plan, a calculated reduction in fuel use and resulting in emissions. Will be set up for the next five years. And finally. We are currently verifying and mapping out the internal approval and acceptance process. Of these policies through the various departments and committees. That have connection with the process and will keep you uh advised as we progress on this. I did leave one thing off for my manager communication. And it is that the towns of Barnstable and Yarmouth have reached out to Mass Coastal Railroad relevant to. Growing concerns about trash along the rail line. Um, we do hope. That there will be an a um a quick resolve to this matter. And I greatly appreciate certainly the efforts of Councilor Clark and other and and Starr and the support. Um, of President Levek, and I know he has had discussions about this as well. So I don't know if he would like to say anything as part of my communication. Uh, President Levek?
So I am, uh, I've had conversations with obviously Counselor Starr, Counselor Clark, and also conversations with. Um, Representative Stephen Exaros in regards of, you know, trying to get uh to the bottom of it, find out where we can find the solutions. So. Uh, there have been conversations with uh Mass Coastal. And then furthermore with Covanta about how to um. Maybe even reboot some procedures that used to take place that don't take place maybe as regularly as they should. So that the trash trains are clear of debris that might be hanging out of the lids. Or that get caught in the creases when the when the trash trains are um dumped, so to speak, with that at their destination. Things get caught in there and then they they kind of fly. That's the explanation that I've got at this point. They are on top of it. They're actually meeting in regards to Mass Coastal and Covanta. I have a letter on my desk that I just actually received today. So things are moving forward in far as getting that uh rectified. But obviously, your um. Letter I have is actually, I think, in response to the letter that you wrote um with the administrator from uh Yara. So. You know, uh, things are moving forward. So thank you for that update. The uh any other questions for uh Councilor Shaughnessy, please? The uh, any other questions for Council Shaughnessy, please, for Town Manager Ls? Thank you.
Thank you, President Levesque. Um, good evening, Town Manager Ls. I have a question with regard to your item number four, which is the twenty twenty-two budget. Um, and I think, as we all recall, last year, mid pandemic, um, obviously, our budget was rushed to get through in time thanks to the pandemic, but also, at the same time, every department was asked to go back and reduce the budget, which every department did with the exclusion of the school department. Um, so obviously, I understand that the municipal operating budget, you know, as part of their increase is sort of undoing some of those COVID reductions that were taken with concerns as to the town's finances. With regard to the school operating budget also increasing by almost one million fifty thousand dollars, um, can you speak as to that increase from the school department?
No, I cannot. I do not have those details. The the school budget is developed, um, you know, in by the through the school committee, by the superintendent, once approved by the school committee, which we have, I believe, two liaisons from town council on, so perhaps either of your fellow counselors may want to speak to that, um, is submitted, approved by school committee to town manager. Town manager includes in the budget and brings it to town council.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring that up because I know there were, um, I think certainly it caused some issues last year when we began to talk about the budget and, you know, many of us. I mean, for me, I I um, just truly didn't feel that it was quite fair to the other departments who I think, you know, including yourself, um, declined their coal increases to their wages and that sort of things. Um, so I just want to know, before we get there, can can we talk about this? But thank you, and I I completely understand.
Yeah, I think, you know, to to be frank, I think that the I'll I'll say two things. One, in retrospect, and then one moving forward. Um, the opportunity was there for council to participate with the school committee as they develop the budget. What what our current leadership, Matt Levesque, has done is par- partnered with myself and Meg Mayo Brown and the Chair of the School Committee, Mike Judge, and we've begin, we've begun meeting, the four of us, as we move into next fiscal year. There is a workshop scheduled with um, school committee early um, in the year, which I'm sure President Levesque can speak to. But so hopefully, your question, though there will always be questions certainly, um, will be better addressed than at this point, which is kind of, okay, it's all done as far as the proposal goes, and now it comes to town council for approval or not. So um, I hope that's helpful, and I don't know if, uh, you know, President Levesque has any anything to add to that.
Thank you, Town Manager Ls, and thank you, Councilor Shaughnessy, for bringing that up. You actually, um, you know, from time to time, as you go from meeting to meeting, it's focusing on what's on that meeting, but my first item to do tomorrow is send an email to um, our fearless administrative assistant Cynthia Level to add a meeting to August. So we're going to move the August meeting up a week, and then we're going to have a workshop, a joint meeting with the school committee. Um, you know, it was with that idea, that genesis of that idea came from out of those meetings with the superintendent, um, Chairman Mike Judge, myself, and Mark Ls. And that will be because that's when their budget starts. So they start their budget workshops in August. Of course, now, we don't typically meet with them until November, December, and this year was later because, again, due to COVID. So and we had already agreed upon that sixty forty split um, in September. So moving forward, they acted in accordance to that. So to kind of alleviate in the future, what we decided to do, I thought was a good idea, was to have that conversation in August and and speak to them, see where enrollment is as far as has it recovered from last year, instead of talking about it after the fact, talked about it before the school year started and give an opportunity um, for the public to see that. I don't foresee it being a um, like a public's going to be similar to what was in regards to CWMP, like a workshop, but but a more in-depth conversation than and then what we have, and then we're looking at, you know, um, we're looking at things in rec in the rearview mirror. In this way, we can look forward with things moving forward. So just hopefully that addresses some of your concern here, but they did behave, I'm assuming that they behaved um, in a way of creating the budget um, in 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 response to how we already actually okayed. And because of that, Town Manager Ls directed them to continue forward with the Level Service.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other question for, oh, Councilor Clark, please?
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Just a brief salute and a thank you to Town Manager Allison and his team for pulling back last year on the finances to get us through the COVID stressors, uh, financial stressors that can um, bring us to a uh, uh, a healthier financial um, situation for our town. So had you not done that last year, um, we would have been um, in much more dire financial straits. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Uh, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a question. I just want to commend uh, Councillors Clark and Starr for their tireless efforts in connection with the trash that was coming off the train. Uh, their vigilance in the face of continued statements that there was was no issue was commendable. Um, and their efforts uh, were reminiscent of many spy movies and things of that nature, including going out with video cameras in order to document what was happening in order to prove their assertion. So kudos to each of them.
Good. Thank you, Councilwoman. And just to just to piggyback on that, I actually, some of part of this genesis just happened while I was volunteering Saturday morning, full disclosure, and with Representative Exaros, and we were talking to a gentleman who's a supervisor for the MBTA. And my question to him was, hey, I've heard about the issues with the trash train? And again, as we move in boxes, and he says, um, are you talking about the the trash? And he specifically said, the bratwurst on the side of the tracks? And I said, yes. And that was due to Councilor Fox's to video. So to your credit, that is, uh, had a lot to do, I'm sorry, to back up your point, it had a lot to do with the uh, the information getting out there. So there was definitely a true statement in in recognition deserved. So any other comment for Town Manager report? Okay. Not seeing any. I'd like to act on the minutes. Vice President Schnep, please read and approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And tonight, we have two sets of minutes to approve. Uh, the first is from our meeting on April fifteenth, so I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one Town Council Meeting. Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Go vote, please.
Councillors? Atslis?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rob Crisetti?
Yes.
Seibert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Fabia?
Thank you. Back to you, Vice President Schnep.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one Special Town Council Meeting.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any hands? Vote, please.
Councillors? Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rob Crisetti?
Yes.
Seibert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Atslis?
Yes.
Fabia?
Great. Thank you for that. Uh, moving on to our next item, which is communications from elected officials, boards, committees, and staff, uh, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Any coming from the council? Councilor Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three quick announcements. Uh, first, I'd like to offer, uh, on behalf of the full council, congratulations to Wendy Northcross for being selected as this year's Mercy Otis Warren Hit Cod Woman of the Year. We know how much she has done uh, for our community. She is a town of Barnstable resident, and she will also be retiring. It'll be a huge loss to to our our chamber, Hit Cod Chamber, but I think this award was long, long due and coming to Wendy, so I want to congratulate her on that. Um, that then I wanted to make note, uh, we know this is the season for a lot of our fire districts to have their annual meetings, and the Centerville, Ostrow, Marson's Mills Fire District uh, annual meeting will be held Tuesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven o'clock at the Centerville Fire Station. Um, that will be preceded the day before on Monday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, from eight A M. to seven P M. for the annual election that also being held at the Centerville Fire Station. And the last announcement I would like to make is that next Friday, May fourteenth, at seven thirty in the morning, uh, the Cape and Islands Select Board and Councillors will be having their monthly meeting. Uh, the guest speaker will be Beth Albert, our new county administrator. And to tie to Mark's report, item ten, uh, we will be uh, asking for some information regarding that forty-one million dollars. So if you'd like to get an early report on how that's going to be distributed, um, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Vice President Schnep. Valuable information. Councilor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. Two brief things. One, also, congratulations to Wendy, but I may be noted that Wendy lives in West Barnstable, where Mercy Otis Warren once lived. So she's from the very same village that um, Mercy had had um, lived. And uh, secondly, on May eighteenth, West Barnstable Civic Association will be having their general membership meeting. Uh, it will be held in the parking lot at the West Barnstable Community Building. And thank, I thank um, Assistant uh, Town Manager Andy Clyburn for helping facilitate the permission for us to use that parking lot. And featured speaker will be Town Manager Mark Ls to talk about the CWMP. Although members are um, this is a membership meeting, uh, brothers would like to hear directly from our Town Manager. You're welcome to join. It's the meeting's at six thirty at the West Barnstable Community Building.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Atslis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a recommission, quick update, uh, from our May third meeting. The current um, lifeguard program, there are about thirty lifeguards short um, as of May third. I just want to put that out there, uh, for anyone in the public that knows of anyone who wants to be or is a lifeguard to contact the Recreation Department. And also, the Leisure Program is also having trouble getting people. So uh, just keep that in mind, the public and fellow councillors, that the direct departments definitely need staff. I know it's a, it's not just a Cape Light issue, it's a, it's a national issue, but as far as, especially here, having summer help, but just want to let you folks know, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Atslis. Councilor Shaughnessy, please.
I just want to let everyone know that uh, this weekend, Saturday, is Shop Local Day on Hyanna Spain Street, so many of the merchants will be having um, definitely open for business and having um, lots of specials in light of the fact that it is Shop Local Day. So I encourage everyone to get out and shop local.
Thank you for that. Councilor Rob Crisetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to announce that on um, Saturday, May fifteenth, with the rain date of uh, the twenty-second, the Civic Association in Katuit is holding its annual Village Cleanup Day. Um, and they, right now, they have about forty-five volunteers, but could always use more. Uh, participants will meet at Lowell Park. Um, they ask that you email the katuit civic association at gmail dot com. So if they have advance notice of how many people they can organize the pickup areas, and they'll provide um, trash bags, pickup tools, and gloves for everyone who takes part. And this has really been a great event and helps to clean up. It helps to uh, keep our streets and and our village nice and clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Just to, just to um, iterate something I had mentioned in the past, uh, Town Manager Ls and I are going to be attending some civic associations to discuss things like the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, Sew Ordinance coming up and or depending on when we are going to meet the local comprehensive plan. Uh, we are meeting, uh, I believe the Centerville Civic Association is coming Monday next, uh, the open meeting, next open meeting for West Barnstable. And I think we're going to do double duty with the Centerville, I'm sorry, both the Marson's Mills Village Association and the Katuit um, Civic Association, the first meeting, the meeting in July. So just to let everybody know about that, if you can get the word out, um, be available there for questions, and I believe we're being put on directly on the agendas. So um, any other councillor communications? Not seeing any? I would say now is time, good time for a break. So um, Council Atslis, did you have something? Okay. Um, I would take, let's take a break, so let's do a five-minute break and try to get back as soon as possible. Thank you. Call him again?
You're all set, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Now we go into our orders of the day. If I could, please, Council Steinheilberg, if you could read item number 2021-140.
Give me a minute, I gotta pull it up. All right, under Old Business, item 2021-140, Authorization of a Housing Development Incentive Program Tax Increment Exemption Agreement between the Town of Barnstable and Standard Holdings LLC for 43 new market rate residential units located at 850 Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as written.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. There are first and a second, and we have Director Jenkins here for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levesque, again Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. I will provide a brief background on this item, and it's a pleasure of the council turn it over to the applicant for further rationale. This item is a request for a tax increment exemption under the Housing Development Incentive Program from Developer Standard Holdings LLC for a multifamily residential project at 850 Falmouth Road. The project is proposed to have a total of 53 units, but it is the 43 market rate units that are the subject of this request. The Housing Development Incentive Program, or HGIP, is an incentive program designed to increase residential growth, expand the diversity of housing supply, support economic development, and promote neighborhood stabilization. The HGIP Tax Increment Exemption Incentive allows for tax relief on the increased value of a market rate residential development within a designated Housing Development Incentive Program zone. The council will recall that we amended our HD zone to include this property on January 26th, 2021. The Town Council Tax Incentive Committee considered the developers' request for tax relief over a period of 20 years for this project, and they affirmatively voted in support of the request. So I will remain available for questions. We also have Arden Cajun, our housing coordinator here, but I will turn it over to the Standard Holdings team for further rationale.
Good evening.
Let me, let me welcome you.
Oh, I'm sorry, man.
Welcome Attorney Law, and we also have developer, Mr. Tim Tellman with us as well, and Arden Cajun, our Housing Development, and so without further ado, Attorney Law, please.
And I apologize for my informal nature, Mr. President.
That's okay, I just.
Without, I know it's, you guys have had a couple of hours and you have a long night ahead of you, so I'm going to try to be brief. I believe the council is very familiar with this project. I've been before you on this on behalf of Standard Holdings, which is owned and operated by Mr. Tellman, who's here tonight, and Bob Carlton. We have worked in conjunction, really I want to thank some people from the town before I get into it, Elizabeth Jenkins, Arden, Mark, Attorney McLaughlin, worked very hard with these folks, and as addressed before, this is a a project that involves a large affordable component, but also a large market rate component. And as Elizabeth indicated, this is the market rate component of the 43 unit. In order for a developer nowadays to build these things, certain benefits are necessary. And I'm sure everybody's watched the news that a two-by-four in the past 11, 12 months has gone from a little under $3 to over $9. Same thing plywood, other building materials, costs have skyrocketed. And just building in general prior to COVID, to build affordable or market rate housing with an affordable component is very difficult, if not impossible, without certain benefits. And this tie agreement allows not only benefits from the town, but also benefits from the Commonwealth, which is substantial and allow the projects like this to get off the ground. I think we can all agree, we need housing in the town of Barnstable. And this will add not only the market rate units, but the 10 affordable rate units at 50%. But it's necessary that we have this approval. And keep in mind that, yes, we will be, my clients will be getting a tax benefit, but that's a, of what's going to be there if they spend the money. Right now, you have a vacant piece of land that pays very little in tax. If this is approved, even with the tax reduction, clients paying more in taxes than they are now. So it's really a net benefit to the town in that they're going to get greater tax revenue, not as much as they would without this, without, I'm not going to suggest that. I mean, this is a very big benefit. But they also get the benefit of additional housing, housing that was approved through tremendous work on behalf of Elizabeth and Arden and the folks at Planning and Development. And it's really necessary in order to do these things, and as I indicated previously, when my clients put their selves on the lines to build this, the cost has gone up tremendously, and they're still standing here trying to get it done, and we would ask that you approve it. I can go into greater detail, I can answer questions, but because of the time of the evening, I'm going to stop talking.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any councillor questions? Council Attila, please.
It's just more of a clarification, since we have a larger audience than we did on March 15th at our TIF-TIE meeting. It was confirmed at that meeting that they would be paying the full fire department, fire district tax. I just want to make that clear, and again, just because it's a larger audience, thank you.
Thank you, Council Attila. That's a very good point.
Appreciate that, yeah, that's a completely separate entity that doesn't get affected by our tie agreement. Thank you for that clarification. Any other councillor, and then Council Rapusetti?
Thank you very much, President Levesque. A quick question. Under the terms of agreement, it requires an annual report. Is that annual report open to the public?
Good question, I believe so. Elizabeth, would you jump in on that? Because I don't know the exact answer to that.
Yes, I would believe so. I believe that's a term of the agreement between DHCD, the applicant, and the town. So I believe that would be a public document that would be available to the public, but certainly we could, we could look more closely at that to see if there is any reason that that might not be assumed.
I can't think of any reason why it would not be a public record.
Thank you.
Attorney McLaughlin, on the side of your hand, did you want to follow up? Are you sufficient?
No, David and I are on the same page on that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney McLaughlin. Council Rapusetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank Mr. Tellman and Mr. Lawler for putting this deal together. It's really been quite a while since that property had any life on it, and it'll be exciting to see families and whatnot living there. When do you anticipate completion date on the project?
We still have to go through the Commonwealth process on the other part of the tie, the other, their portion, and normally that would take a couple of months, but my experience with COVID is, you know, maybe add a 50% to that or double it, but sometimes it's been faster. COVID's crazy. You don't, it's very hard to predict, but we need that one other step, because under the provisions, we can't start construction until we get approval, otherwise we can't get approval. So it's kind of a, it's not a chicken and an egg thing, it's a very clear, defined process that you have to get approval from the Commonwealth, and this really is the next, this is the penultimate step prior to that approval, so we should. My hope would be, you know, if we can get approval in, you know, in the summer, then then it takes, you know, probably six weeks to get your contractor lined up and then ready to build, so it would be hopefully starting construction in the fall.
So do you anticipate occupancy in 2022, in this time next year?
I, there's so many variables between construction and I would not say, no, you could, we wouldn't be able to get it built in nine months, no way. No, not with the, and we also have the issues right now with COVID about materials, not just, not just being expensive, but just unavailable. I think we would start the process this fall, and depending on our ability to buy materials in bulk, we, I would be, I would think that we would be under construction certainly this time next year, and probably well on our way. But construction takes, you can't, you can't build a 50, you know, a 54-story building in nine months, it just doesn't work coordination-wise.
Excuse me? A 54-story building?
A 54-story, 54-unit.
Okay.
Four-story, 54-unit, yeah. We're putting that in a residential building. I apologize. 54-unit, or 53-unit, four, three, four-story building in a period of time, it just does, it just can't happen. I did miss. That would, you talk about getting an uproar. We're going to put it in Katuitt.
Appreciate it. Any other councillor questions? Council Deborah Dagwell, please.
I'm back. I just wanted to, Council Rapusetti answered the questions that I wanted to ask as well. But I just wanted to congratulate, or thank the developer for helping us, you know, find a way to address that, that I sort of had been sitting there for a long time, so I just wanted to congratulate him and thank him for investing here in our town.
You're welcome. Council Attila, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. To whomever can answer this question, just curious, when will these units be available for the public to secure? Will it be pre-construction, you know, during construction, after? Just curious.
There's a whole comprehensive plan that has to be done. I believe that during construction, I think the initial processes would be put in place, and then, depending on what ultimate process through the various housing organizations on the affordable units would come online right away, would obviously want to be at occupancy as soon as possible, because we wanted to get the rent rolls going as soon as possible.
So TBD.
Yeah, but, but with a timeframe, we would have everything going, you know, that type of work would be, and part of that work would have to be approved before construction. There has to be a plan approved before construction, but then actually how it's implemented would, would be based in.
And, and now, just to follow up, and would that be something similar to the market rate units?
No, under the, when we were approved for zoning, the, or the market rates will just come online as a market rate unit would go. Add once they're up and ready.
Before they, before they finish, or just before, or?
Well, I mean, I haven't talked to my client about that, because it's so far off, but my guess is they would probably several months before completion, and the CO would be talking to tenants to get occupancy. That's just my guess.
All right, thank you.
Any other councillor questions? I, for one, am very appreciative of the fact that, you know, the developers are investing in this town, and taking the time and and taking the time and resources at this point in this nature and this climate economic wise, you know, to really fill up a really, obviously, it's been a topic of conversation a number of times already, that housing is, we're in crisis mode. And this will obviously go to alleviate that to a certain extent. Really thank you. Can't say enough. Appreciate you. You could have done that anywhere and you did it right here and back. Much appreciated.
Mr. President, I I forgot to just thank one person. In the beginning, when we went through zoning, we had to get a sponsor and Counselor Steinheber did that, and he's been contacting me regularly, keeping an eye on the project, and his help and assistance has been invaluable, and I wanted to thank him as well.
So noted. Thank you. I'm sure Counselor Steinheber will say that he's just trying to help help you.
Well, it's his district and he's I think he's very happy that we're adding this to his district. Yeah.
Absolutely. Takes care of blight, as we've talked about, and creates housing, which we need and new growth dollars, which we need. So thank you.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other comment discussion move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Dagone.
Yes.
Raprasetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Ashworth.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Fabia.
Excellent. Thank you and congratulations. Again, really appreciate your investment in our community.
And we appreciate everyone's support in town. The process has been terrific within the town hall as well as with everyone here. Thank you again for the overwhelming support.
Good night, everybody.
My pleasure. Good night. Thank you. I think that is our only item of old business to take care of. Moving on, if Counsel Raprasetti, if you could read into the record, item number twenty twenty-one dash point seven zero.
Yes, Mr. President, this is new business. Item twenty twenty-one, one, seven, zero, amending the administrative code, chapter two, four, one, article three, multiple member appointed organizations, chapter subsection two, four, one dash three thirty-nine, A Youth Commission, as written. This is a first reading, refer to a second reading on May twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
However, I thank you, Mr. President. I I'd like to waive the the rules, suspend the rules, and perhaps we could act on this tonight. And I will offer the rationale, if I may.
Second.
First and second on that, we need a a vote on the the motion, second to suspend the rule.
Counselors. Dagone.
Yes.
Raprasetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Ashworth.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Park.
Yeah.
Fabia.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for that, Counsel Raprasetti, and back to you for the rationale, please.
Yes, this is a good problem to have. We've got more more of the youth that want to participate in the youth commission, and we don't have enough spaces for them. So the present membership is limited to fifteen individuals, thirteen voting members between the ages of thirteen and nineteen, and two adult advisors. And the parameters of membership were approved under subsection two, four, one, thirty-nine of the Barnstable Admin Code. And since the previous amendment of two, four, one, thirty-nine by order number two, twenty sixteen, zero, five, nine, the youth commission is engaged in aggressive recruitment to form a stronger, more diversified board represent take a representative of the youth populace with regards to age, grade, and race. The result of this recruitment has been a commission which is now composed of thirteen official youth commissioners and four prospective youth commissioners who have filed papers from area schools with the intent of serving on the youth commission. As a result, the commission sees the immediate need to increase its membership as defined in the Barnstable Admin Code. The youth commission believes that this increase would allow for the continued participation of interested youth in the town of Barnstable. Further, the waiving of the residency requirement is reflected of the commission's interest in including all youth applicants who attend a school within the town of Barnstable, thereby conveying their vested interest in the welfare of the town. And I'd like to acknowledge Patty Machado, the Recreation Director, and as well as the Appointments Committee in their in their assistance.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Appreciate that rationale. And so with that, do we have any council discussion? Counselor Bogan, please.
Thank you very briefly. I I've said many times as a member of the Appointments Committee, these are always the most refreshing candidates that come before us. And the dilemma that we had at this time, if my recollection serves me correctly, is that we had five. I made the motion to move all of the candidates that were before us. Unfortunately, there were five and we only had four openings. And it just seemed like it would be a disservice to any of these candidates. These are the voices of the future, and I wholeheartedly endorse the proposed amendment.
Thank you for that, Counselor Bogan. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
I'd also like to add on to Counselor Bogan's comments that also as a member of the Appointments Committee, that in addition to simply the youth commission, they have a number of their own subcommittees, all of which are incredibly active, and this increase in their ranks will assist them on the subcommittees because they'll have more people to work with on subcommittees, and right now they're spread a little thin. And again, I just I commend them. I agree. They are the most fun to interview, just full of great ideas, and I fully support supporting them a hundred percent.
Great. Excellent. Thank you, Counsel. Ooh, Counsel Dagone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize Counselor Cullum, who's not here tonight, who has been very, very instrumental in working with the youth commission and making sure that they stayed viable. And it's nice to see, you know, as a member of the point appointments committee years ago, it was nice that we finally got to a point where we're including other students from the town of Barnstable to come in and perhaps, you know, share ideas that they are seeing in their in their schools here in the town of Barnstable. So that's a great addition, as well as the addition to increasing the number of participants. So kudos to this Appointments Committee for their their diligent work that they're doing right now with this youth group. All of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dagone. Any other council discussion? Not seeing any. I will move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Raprasetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Ashworth.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
Fabia.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, appreciate the good work that the Appointments Committee did with the with the youth commission. Moving on to the next item of new business, Counsel Hebert, if you could read into the record, please, item number twenty twenty-one dash one, seven, one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, your indulgence as as I bring it up on screen. This is this is item number twenty twenty-one dash one, seven, one. Council vote on the merit of a citizen's request that the town council establish a resident zoning task force comprised principally of residents to provide perspective on zoning proposals and planned revisions. It's open to a public hearing and a roll call vote majority. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know attorney Nova.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I appreciate this. We have first and second. I know attorney Nova is available to explain a little bit how the process went and give us a little bit of a rationale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Karen Nova, Town Attorney. I'm just going to give the background for this item. On March third, Robert and Ann Schulte, on behalf of themselves and other residents of the town, submitted to the town council a request that the council establish a resident zoning task force comprised principally of residents to provide perspective and input on zoning proposals and plan revisions. Although the request referred to itself as a group petition pursuant to section eight dash seven B of the town charter, it does not contain the actual signatures of the residents whose names appear in support of the request. And because the request does not contain the signatures of at least one hundred and fifty registered voters of the town, it does not meet the charter's requirements for a group petition and cannot be considered as such. However, in recognition of the difficulties of getting signatures from one hundred and fifty people during the current public health crisis, council leadership has agreed, as an accommodation to the residents in these unique circumstances, to generally follow the group petition process by advertising and holding a public hearing and taking a vote on the merits of the request. The act to be taken by the council at this meeting is simply a vote on whether the request has merit. It is not a vote to approve the request as written. If the council concludes that the request has merit, then it will be up to council leadership and the full council to consider what, if any, actions it may wish to take. And to ensure compliance with the open meeting law, any action by the council, other than the vote on the merits that you'll take tonight, should take place at a future town council meeting so that it may be properly noticed on that meeting's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for that, attorney. Karen Nova, I really appreciate that. And thank you for the help through the process of getting this on the agenda and helping us along as well. Could have done it naturally.
Thank you.
That being said, the rationale is given, so I would be at this point open to hearing people for the public hearing.
Hey, great. First for the public hearing this evening, we have Amanda Conver. And if you could unmute, are we following the three minute structure?
Yes, please.
Okay, Amanda, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much, and thank you everyone for having me here tonight. I was here a few weeks ago to voice my support for amending the existing ADU bylaws in Barnstable. At that time, I stress how urgent it was to enable Barnstable homeowners to be able to create additional housing options, not only to support themselves, but also to support our workforce. At that time, I spoke of how critical it is to add housing stock to our for our economic development. Our small business owners cannot hire people if those people cannot find anywhere to live. And I feel the urgency of the situation even more today than I did then, just four weeks ago. We are at a crisis level when it comes to a housing attainability and affordability in our town, and the sustainability of our community depends on urgent action. This is one of the reasons I am opposed to the proposed residential zoning task force. It will further delay further delay the necessary action our community needs to take on our housing shortage. A similar action in Dennis, a similar group in Dennis, has delayed the implementation of their IADU bylaw for two years so far. We don't have two years left to to address this issue. I am a huge proponent of civic engagement. Anyone who knows me knows that I am an incredibly engaged citizen. I have served on town advisory boards, and although I think they're important, important and can be effective, they can also be ineffective and a huge drain on town staff, especially when they are duplicating efforts of groups that already exist. The Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals are already performing the duties of a resident zoning task force in the town of Barnstable. I also find that many of the advisory groups are not representative of the broader population of the town. They are usually populated by a small group of people who have the time, ability, and inclination to serve on these boards. And instead, I would love to see the town use their energy to find ways to engage with people who might not be able to serve on these boards in order to get a more representative input. And I know we've Director Jenkins spoke a lot about that tonight. Everybody, a lot of people have made comments about finding other ways to engage with a broader broader citizenry. This past year has been hard, but it's presented us with many digital tools to be able to engage with a more diverse population. We need to be innovative in these strategies and not do the same old thing that we always do. These strategies can be implemented for the upcoming update to the local comprehensive plan where we can get input not only from the residential task force petitioners, they will have ample opportunity, as Director Jenkins outlined tonight, to give input on future zoning priorities for the town during the local comprehensive planning process. But it will also give those harder to reach individuals who deserve to have their own voice heard, too. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Congress, for your for your time and thanks for sticking with us late into the night.
It's been a it's been a night, but you guys have a longer one, so.
I I just wanted to say thank you from not to myself for the rest of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's more public comment, just waiting for the next.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Next for the public hearing comment is Margaret and Neil Sutton. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, you're muted. This is Mr. and Mrs. Sutton, you're muted.
I see.
There you go. I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Evening, members of the council. My name is Niall Sutton. I'm an architect and a city planner. I reside at forty-four Fox Run in Centerville. I want to be recorded this evening in strong support of the resident zoning task force. This is an idea which whose time has come and which I believe has a great deal of merit. And I believe to that point, I would like to say to the council that I would also like to volunteer to be a member of that task force if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Sutton. Really appreciate your time and sticking with us again late into the evening. Have a great day.
Next for a public comment is Megan Moore. Megan, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you for taking the time to hear this. So like others have mentioned, I appreciate the goal of civic engagement as well, but this isn't the way to achieve it. Our local comprehensive plan is, however, one of many ways to increase civic engagement. As you've seen tonight, there are a number of working people who showed up to support housing and represent a much larger silent majority. They vote, but their engagement is limited because of the nature of working multiple jobs and raising families. As the council considers the merits of this petition, I ask you to consider just some of the following. A lot has been made about special interests, and I think that's a red herring argument. What is a special special interest? Are our Chamber of Commerce, who speak for local businesses struggling to find workers? Are young professionals in our local unions representing working people struggling to find housing special interests? Are homeowners who profit from keeping housing inventory artificially low special interests? Are they investors? Are civic associations in Barnstable watch special interests? Are the real estate professionals? Who see homeownership for locals becoming a thing of the past special? At least four of you have real estate licenses. I don't think you consider that profession dirty. I think we need to stop referring to our friends and neighbors as special interests and instead recognize everyone has their own agenda and focus on how you make sure everyone knows what's going on and has an opportunity to weigh in. It's great that the people who organized this have the time to sit on the task force, but that's not true of people who need housing the most. It cause working people and families, including our essential workers, who played an integral role in keeping our local economy alive and what many consider low skilled jobs. These are the people we need to think of when efforts like this are put forward. How would this affect those who need housing the most? We need to be sure that renters are represented in addition to property owners. For people who care about housing, they already have to go in front of the Planning Board, the Town Council, they have to go through multiple meetings for both the Planning Board and the Town Council in order to get something as basic and as common sense as an ADU bill. With this, they also have to with this. With this, they also have to, with this zoning task force, they would also have to persuade in addition a group of people that they should be able to add an ADU to their own property to help increase housing stock. Not just the local concerns, but we also need to look at history for our guide. Historically, single family zoning was passed in response to people of color moving to communities during the Great Migration because they could only afford to live in apartments or multifamily homes. That's a really ugly history. So before we cling to the mantra of protecting community character, we should consider why we have it in the first place. Later municipalities put all the multifamily homes and apartments in the poorer areas where people of color are rather than spreading them out. And even though we've done away with redlining, the legacy still exists and gives existing homeowners a leg up on future homeowners and renters. In the last year, when Barnstable Watch and the civic associations offered an alternative bylaw to what the town was considering on short term rental zoning, their solution was to ban short term rentals everywhere but in Hyannis, once again sticking unwanted housing in the neighborhoods of color. Because of this legacy, the legislature passed the Housing Choices Bill to lower the threshold for a positive zoning change from an insanely unfair toothless majority to a simple majority.
Ms. Moore, can you please wrap it up?
Yep. So we can't set up a situation where those who have more time, money and connections and an interest in keeping things the same have a town endorsed belly pulpit from which to recommend slowing down or watering down housing. We were in a housing crisis before and it's just gotten worse. We need shovels in the ground now. And we have processes in place to do the same things that this residential task force is asking to do. So please, I strongly recommend against the zoning task force and to do what we can do now to get housing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Appreciate your time and thanks for sticking with us.
Can I have a point of order here? Can I say something?
Sure, I'll entertain it. Counselor start.
I, I would like you to explain what, what the issue is we're dealing here tonight. I think the three people I've heard speak. From what I understand, we're deciding whether to accept the 250 signatures as presented.
No, sure. No, sir. We've already accepted them. What we're, what we're discussing tonight is the actual, we're, we're giving it its due. So we're saying it's, we're not treating, we're not saying it's a petition, it's a request. And we're treating it in the manner like a petition outlined in the charter. So we are actually going to have a, we have a public hearing now. And then we're going to actually vote on the merit of this residential task force this evening.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Moore, again. If you could sign off, that'd be appreciated just to, so I can keep everybody in the screen. And do we have anybody else, Sarah?
Yes, uh, next is Natalie Pitter. Natalie, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Hi, Ms. Pittinger. You're muted, Ms. Pittinger.
Sorry. Yep, I. Natalie Pittinger, I just want to say that I am in favor of a citizen task force for zoning. I really want to see the town give some, give the residents some say in the town zoning policy. Residents should have more of a voice. Our views should be heard before the regulations and rules and all that are created, and especially if they're changed. We should be aware of that. Residents should not have to react to the process. We should be included in the process. And you know, as cumbersome as it might be at times, it's a better process in the long run. Everybody will be happier and you might even end up with a better result. You know, I just don't think outside interests should have a heavier influence than those that live here locally. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Pittinger. Thank you for sticking around too. Late for the evening. Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Uh, next for public comment is Sheila Mulcahy. Sheila, you can unmute and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sheila Mulcahy. I have been a resident of the town of Barnstable for forty-two years. And I have been on the Disability Commission for twelve years. And I didn't do the homework that Megan Moore did, but I support everything she said and wasn't able to say 100%. And if I could give her my time, I would. But I will say also that I've got three children that were raised on the Cape and I have two grandchildren that were born and raised on the Cape. And none of them can afford to live here. And we keep on talking about, you know, going to where we are. Well, our families are where we are. And the path to form our future, that, that is our family. So we need to do everything that we can to, to expand affordable housing for us, for our residents and for our families. And I feel also that this task force seems much more about exclusivity rather than inclusivity. And therefore I suggest that the council turn down their, their request to form their task force. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mulcahy. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next up for public hearing is Anne Schulte. Anne, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Anne Schulte of Centerville. As you all well know, my husband and I, in response to the town's repeated requests for citizen engagement, which I continued to hear tonight from various counselors, proposed that the town form a citizen task force on zoning to consider resident input and not just commercial and business interests as it does now. That's it. It was not an attempt to be racist or anti-ADU as many people who spoke at public comment two weeks ago and tonight declared. Their malicious, unfounded comments were exactly that, malicious and unfounded. At this time, I'd like to thank sincerely Counselor Bogan and Counselor Hebert for recognizing and acknowledging the spirit in which that request was made. Housing and zoning are critical concerns for us all, not just business and commercial interests. A task force would make an attempt to balance the scale and have everyone represented. The town has said that it would like to communicate and talk with citizens more frequently. Even hired a consultant recently to help figure out how to best discuss the comprehensive wastewater plan. That's great, and I applaud that. But I strongly believe that talking is only half the job. Listening, responding and explaining your thinking is the other and much more important path. Dialogue. That is what our proposal hopes to accomplish and ensure that the town listens and responds to the opinions and concerns of all its citizens, not just a select few. Please vote yes on the merits of moving this proposed task force forward. You have the opportunity to encourage dialogue with your constituents, and I urge you to listen. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schulte. Appreciate your time.
No problem.
Next up for public comment on the public hearing is Ken Nozel. Ken, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Nozel and I reside in Centerville. I would like to speak tonight to offer support and hope you will also on petition 2021 dash one seventy-one before the council tonight. History has shown us in the past months, zoning issues bring different opinions to the table, but many times can become contentious and heated in the public forum. I know the town has asked for public comment and tries to be transparent on issues like as in the proposed sewer expansion project in town. With that thought in mind, I believe a vote to establish a resident zoning task force would give us, would give a voice for fair, diverse and transparent public input on zoning issues that come before it and then be able to advise council in these matters. It would help to become a more civil and fair way to express opinions concerning zoning issues before they get to a public meeting forum where a few feel they have to call out, humiliate and berate others for expressing different opinions. I ask the council to strongly support this well bought out proposal and vote yes to establish this task force. And again, I thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Nozel. Appreciate your time.
Uh, next for public comment on the public hearing is Erin Andrews. Erin, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for hearing us all out this evening. I live and work in Centerville and I do not believe that a resident zoning task force is necessary. Adding a layer of bureaucracy will create more difficulty for people to live here. If this task force is added, I fear that the people who face the greatest barriers will continue to be marginalized people, our black indigenous and neighbors of color, low income and working families and non-native English speakers. Our community, especially working people and families who contribute to the vitality and beauty of our town, they deserve to live here safely and securely, and that process need not be more cumbersome. I recommend that the energy spent on creating this task force be redirected to organizing instead for housing justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Appreciate your time.
Next up is Katri Malali. Katri, you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you very much for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak at public hearing. My name is Katri Malali. I live in Marson's Mills, native Cape Codder. And I'm here to speak on the lack of merit for this residential zoning task force. There are already a lot of people working on zoning and planning. We have the planning board, the zoning board, the town council, the town manager's office, the town employees that are hired to do their job. And they're doing their job really well. I commend them. They're working hard. They do their research. I've been involved with the planning department personally with property that I own in Hyannis. And I applaud the town of Barnstable. There's a lot of things going on. And to bring on another group of people to give their opinion or to be involved in the process, I believe will slow everything down for everybody. One of the arguments about, that the zoning task force has is that every voice should be heard. Every voice can be heard, just like it is tonight. I'm talking, anybody is welcome to come and speak at a town council meeting. When someone needs to file for a zoning variance, they have that opportunity to speak their case. So I don't understand how a group of people would be able to voice everybody's individual concerns. I do not see the merit in that at all. There is a critical housing shortage in the town of Barnstable. We all know it. I drove by the other day thinking I was passing a garage sale. I'm a big garage sale fanatic. And it wasn't a garage sale, it was an open house. There were probably fifteen to twenty cars on Old Stage Road going to that open house. I have never in my life seen something like that before. And that house now already has a sale pending sign in front of it. I have two young professionals, children who are living together because they can't afford to live apart. One of them wants to buy a house but can't afford to do it. To be able to have a zoning, another level of bureaucracy or conversation, I believe is going to slow everything down from an ADU proposal to anything else that comes across the planning and zoning departments' table and desks. I strongly urge the town council to not see the merit in this residential task force and to move forward with the ADU proposal and all those other proposals that will find housing for folks and families who may be living in their cars right now or living on the street or being separated because they're not able to all be in the same place. I personally know a family of four that are trying to find a place to live and it's impossible and they're not living in the best circumstance. My heart goes out to them and I really believe that the, there is no merit to having the zoning board, our zoning task force of residents. Again, I thank you for your time, your efforts, the energy that all of you put into this, the late night hours that you have. And I do hope that you vote against the merits of this request. Thank you.
Next up for public comment on the public hearing is John Pro. John, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm one of the signatories of the group petition asking for a residential zoning task force that Anne Schulte described earlier. The shelters are nothing if not constructive. I thought the idea of a task force consisting of residents from all seven villages to gauge in zoning early in the process is an idea that meets the moment. This year, we've all heard you, the town council and the town manager encourage citizens' engagement in important public business before the town. The task force is one way, a way other towns have used to bring residents into zoning discussions early on. I believe this task force could also be instrumental in helping the town identify ways to more fully age all citizens on important land use questions that affect every resident. Particularly if broadcast on channel eighteen, the task force will also be a venue for every intercedent's resident to learn about zoning ideas, their rationale, their pros and cons, long before they arrive here as fully developed proposal. An informed citizenry will ultimately help you arrive at the right outcome for our community. The task force is also a constructive way to enable dialogue between residents and the town on zoning matters. We could use more of that. Dialogue, exchange of views and real discussion of facts is simply not achievable in three minute, one-way audio clips. In my view, having watched zoning matters debated here over the past few years, we'd all benefit from more discussion, dialogue and facts prior to the town council public comment where people, including myself, tend to line up in our corners. The task force is a constructive way to make progress on that front and to foster collaboration. I was pleased to help circulate the petition to reach 150 signers. Needed to get it in front of the town council. Took no time at all to reach that number, in fact, to double it in order to get the idea to you in time for tonight's consideration. I've heard a few remarks since it was submitted that there are lots of Osterville signers. They are indeed. I actually do play with others and have many publicly engaged friends where I live that were more than eager to sign this worthy petition. Not only was I pleased to assist in getting the petition over the signature end goal, but I want to underscore that the petition said, and said in plain word, the recommendation on task force membership, a judgment call ultimately up to this council is there for the, to be, is there, is for there to be resident representation from every village. Our town code, our local comprehensive plan and the planning department's department's function as set out in law respects our seven villages. This petition reflects that respect and recommends you populate the task force accordingly. I hope that you vote tonight to help increase diverse resident engagement in collaboration with the town. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pro. Appreciate you staying up late as well.
All right, thanks.
Uh, next we have Megan Newman. Megan, you have three minutes. You can go ahead and unmute. Megan, Newman, hello?
Hi, Megan.
Oh, lost her.
No, she's there. She just doesn't, Megan. Are you there, Megan? Can you hear us? Megan, are you there? There you are. Megan, go ahead, three minutes. Hello? Megan?
Can we come back to her?
Yeah, I think we're gonna come back to her. Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, I, I, here she comes.
Okay, Megan.
Megan, we can't hear you.
No, can't hear you, Megan. Let's come back to her, Sarah. Do we have somebody else?
Yep, give me one second.
Thank you.
Hi, Ted Lowery. It's your turn for public comment. You have three minutes.
Mr. Lowery, can you take, shut off the, the television screen maybe if you have that on?
I've got it, I've got it muted.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ted Lowery. I live in Barnstable Village. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Few issues on Cape Cod are more, at present are more important than residential housing for many reasons. To retain younger residents, for our elderly to age in place and to provide jobs and living units for everyone. Zoning is key to housing. It needs, it needs to be done by creating and listening to all viewpoints. Resident input and advice are critical to making informed decisions. I have read through all the opinions and heard many, and, and there are many, on the resident zoning task force. I'm in favor of the task force and urge the council to see the merits and to give us residents a more direct voice by creating the task force. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowery.
Next, we have Rob Brennan. Rob, you can unmute. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Rob Brennan, resident of Osterville and businessperson in Hyannis. I'm here tonight to speak on, on the petition for a resident zoning task force. And some of the comments I've heard already tonight is that this is a petition intended, you know, to direct to all citizens and not just a select few. However, you know, selecting a few citizens is exactly, you know, what this petition, you know, is asking for. I also heard it said tonight that this is about having a seat at the table. Reading it, though, it, it seems clear it's actually asking, you know, for a, a separate and new table. This is the table. The planning board is the table. And those who are here at, you know, quarter past ten tonight, I think, represent those citizens. So I'm, I'm here speaking against it, but, but not against civic engagement. So two things I just want to point out. You know, Barnstable zoning covers a long list, you know, of uses. We heard some of those mentioned tonight in other discussion, you know, with regard to the shell fishing. Councilor Clark brought that up. With regard to business uses, Councilor Rap Grissette, you know, brought that up in the context of needing more of that in to it. But the truth is, the use, uses that are covered by the Barnstable zoning bylaw are, are long. And the reading the introduction to the Barnstable zoning bylaw, section two forty dash two, residential is only mentioned once, and it's mentioned at the very end. That's why, you know, to me, it seems that elevating one group of stakeholders, and in fact, all the uses, you know, everyone associated with all those uses, residential, business, agricultural, industrial, institutional, those are all stakeholders in Barnstable zoning. So elevating one, you know, residential to its own separate body and its own separate input seems inconsistent, you know, with the purpose of zoning. I also question, you know, whether it's permissive or stands contrary, you know, to mass general laws, chapter forty-eight, section five, which lays out, you know, those bodies and those procedures through which zoning proposals, you know, are intended to travel. My second point, you know, is that expanding civil engagement is good, and we can never have enough of it, in, in my opinion. And in fact, you know, tonight when we were, we were talking about the, the local comprehensive plan, I think Elizabeth Jenkins, you know, hit on a lot of steps and a lot of measures specifically intended, you know, to expand and broaden civic engagement. This petition, by contrast, you know, would, would go in the opposite direction, I believe. I think it would concentrate and homogenize civil engagement on zoning to essentially-
Brendan, would you please wrap up?
Yes, I was trying to be brief. Those who have backyards, and I think any time you couch a question, in, in my backyard, yes, in my backyard, no. It's not a good proposition. There are other methods, including formal charrettes, you know, clearing out a gymnasium, getting donuts and fruit, and a lot of people to have long discussions and a strong towns model of just having those constant discussions. So I think there's a great pathway to civic engagement. A good thing, I don't believe that this, this petition is, is a good path for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Appreciate your time.
Next, we have Shawna Moos. Shawna, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there tonight and for the opportunity to speak. I, my name's Shawna Moos, and I am a Centreville resident. I've lived here for eighteen years as have my in-laws who live across the street from me. And, you know, we're very embedded in, in the community. And my in-laws are looking to downsize, you know, and be able to, you know, age in this community. There is nowhere for them to move to. There are no smaller units, as we know. So zoning is very close to my heart. I also work in housing. And like others have said, that I, I would like to ask the council to vote against the merits of this particular task force. But not against the idea of increased municipal engagement, which I think every single person on this call has spoken out in, in support of, whether you're for the task force or against it. We all see that we have to get more citizens involved in these zoning decisions. We're making a community together. We all have to have a voice. But I'd like to, you know, really, Rob said it very well, Amanda, Megan, you know, the idea that this is where we come to be heard. You know, I'm in Centreville. A lot of people who signed the letter are in Centreville. I didn't hear about the letter from anywhere but here at the town. The town has, and there's a lot of processes in place statewide. There's CHAPA, which does a municipal engagement initiative and will actually work with towns to provide those kind of design services, holding charrettes, holding community meetings, figuring out, again, how to meet people where they are. We haven't tried that yet with the comprehensive plan. And, you know, so at the end of that, we might decide to create a task force. But before we go out to a huge broad group, it's too soon to say we're gonna pick seven people. And these seven people are gonna represent all of us. We've already voted. I have people who, you know, represent me in my precinct and my neighborhood. And I've already, I've already picked that person, and I had a role in picking that person. So I'm, I'm very wary of having another person appointed to represent me, you know, and, and not having any kind of role or say in that. I'm afraid that I'll be left out, and other people will also be left out of this task force process. So that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Moos. Appreciate your time. I'll leave you at this moment.
Next, we have Lisa Guyan. Lisa, you have three minutes.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Lisa Guyan. I'm a resident in West Barnstable. And I'm here really to just speak about the merit of the petition itself. I'll start by saying I'm a native Cape Codder, grew up here, run a nonprofit organization here, believe deeply in the work of civic engagement, transparency, and citizen representation. And that's why I was so interested to hear about this petition through this process, because I had not heard about it through any other process, nor had any of my neighbors here in my community of West Barnstable. The major focus of this petition is civic engagement. Yet it provides seven seats for seven individuals, one from each village selected by their civic associations to represent the rest of citizens. In the petition itself, there's very little to no language about civic engagement or engaging others in this whole process and bringing voices of a diverse set of village residents forward. In fact, it primarily starts with the whole concept of civic engagement. But when you actually read through the petition, it starts to change the language pretty quickly. It focuses on providing perspective, point of view, and then advising, and then it goes to assisting. And then it talks about reviewing. And ultimately, in the petition, it talks about drafting ordinances to be shared. And I think that this, what's being proposed as a civic engagement initiative really is much more a condensed set of citizens who have a very clear perspective on what they'd like to see happen and not see happen in our community. And I heard a couple of speakers talk about how this doesn't relate to ADUs. However, ADUs are mentioned throughout the entire petition and proposal. So I hope that the council will take public feedback this evening into consideration. I hope they'll consider voting no in this petition.
Thank you, Ms. Guyan.
Next, we have Ellen Nozel. Ellen, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I think I've got all my technology going. Thank you very much. Good evening. I am Ellen Nozel of Centreville. I wish to offer my support for the creation of a resident task, resident zoning task force as proposed to the town council. I feel that this would provide productive dialogue early in the process of zoning concerns. Zoning changes and changes within zoned areas have historically been confusing and contentious issues in the villages. And when they affect the quality of residents' life, they become personal. A conversation with a member of the proposed task, task force would offer residents clarification on zoning issues and an avenue to express opinions in advance of a town-wide discussion in a public meeting. A task force would neither bypass nor usurp the roles of elected officials, but would enhance the flow of communication and information in both directions. A public meeting such as this does not allow for two-way conversation and communication. Residents need an avenue to do just that. Organizations that represent the interests of people and businesses with a financial stake in zoning issues are vocal in town. The resident zoning task force would offer the same voice and advice to the town council on behalf of citizens who reside in Barnstable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Nozel. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You too.
Next is David Houghton. David, you have three minutes.
Tony Houghton. You're on mute, sir.
Am I unmuted?
You are. Welcome back.
Good evening, David Houghton, Centreville. I, I would respectfully recommend the town council vote not to, not to recommend this, to find that this does not have merit for a number of reasons. Primarily, the petitioners can, can achieve what they, what they seek, their, their goals and objectives. They, they've been mentioned, advising and educating, assisting in planning and contributing to zoning consistency without forming another governmental body. If the town council were to vote the merits, and, and if you then move to a discussion of actually creating this zoning task force, you'd be creating another governmental body. The petitioners can, can achieve their goals without creating another governmental body. They can form an organization among themselves, whether it's formal or whether it's informal, to achieve and assert the same things. It, it would be not unlike a civic association, except that, unlike a civic association, it might have general, it might, it might be, have a specific purpose specific to zoning. They can meet, they can, they can discuss, they can propose zoning, they can meet with town staff, with the council, maybe in a, on a subcommittee format, and a hot committee ahead of time to discuss the, these processes and discuss zoning into office suggestions. But in my opinion, again, not legal, it does not have to be in the form of a governmental body. I think others have referenced, in addition, zoning, as you, as you know, is a fairly rigid process. It's, there are specific roles that specific bodies have, like the, like the planning board and the, and the town council. And there are specific time tables. I believe it's sixty-five days from the date of initiation. How would a zoning task force fit into that process? And would it, would it be able to fit in? Would it be able to meet, and the other bodies meet in the, in accordance with the time, with the required timetable? So I, I think, again, in summation primarily, the goal, the, you know, the purpose, the idea that the petitioners have is great, but they can accomplish it in, in a way that does not require the formation of a governmental body. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, Mr. Houghton. Thank you for being with us at ten thirty at night.
Next, we have Alisa Magnada. Alisa, you have three minutes. If you could unmute.
And the other bodies.
But if you could mute your, your TV. Alisa, are you there?
Alisa, you're on. Alisa? You're on. If you could just mute your television, that'd be awesome. Can you hear us?
Are you talking to me?
I am.
I, I've got too many devices going. I'm watching it on my phone, and I'm trying to juggle this. I'm sorry. So I do have comments prepared. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for hearing our comments this evening and, and for going so long to ensure that we all get an opportunity to speak here. I'm Alisa Magnada. I'm the CEO of Housing Assistance Corporation. And you all are in the unenviable position of balancing the request of a special interest group and what's best for your town. So I offer my comments here more as recommendations for your thoughtful consideration. My point will echo many of what the points that you've already heard here this evening, so I will be brief. But first, let me just preface what I'm saying and you've heard from others. We are legitimately in a housing crisis in our region. We have a housing shortage. And so doing anything that would impede our ability to respond to the crisis would be irresponsible, in my opinion. So after reviewing, though, the citizens' requests, it does seem that they are looking for stronger citizens' engagement. And we know, you know, that this is very important to make sure that voices are heard, that, that people's experience are brought to the table so that you can balance your own personal experience with what the community needs. So I believe that that will come in, though, as part of your local comprehensive plan, right? And I believe that you are starting this process or coming up on your process. And through the local comprehensive plan, there's considerable effort to engage the community throughout that process. So I feel like having another committee would be a bit redundant. And so I wonder if in lieu of another committee, there could be just a more extensive marketing that could initiate and solicit feedback from residents of all walks of life and throughout the entire town, rather than elevating the voices of just a few. Because as they say in their letter, right, zoning does matter. We've seen the impact and effect of zoning policies that keep people out and don't allow housing to be built. It is personal. It is our community. And, and that's why allowing people to speak at the citizen speaks, whether it's at your town council meeting, your planning board, or through your community engagement, through your local comprehensive plan process, will be more representative and create more equity and access for all, all residents of Barnstable. No matter if they own a house, rent a house, are a business owner, are here short-term or seasonal or whatever, whatever it may be, allowing people to come forward so that you can take in the comments and experiences from the diverse population that lives in Barnstable, including our Brazilian population, right, fifteen thousand. We should be figuring out how to bring them to the table and hear what their experience is. So this is the forum, right? It's the, the, it's not only the fastest path to ensure we do nothing to impede our ability to respond to the crisis, but it's also the most inclusive and creates the most equity in the town. So I thank you again for your time and for really for staying with it and letting us all come here and speak. It really demonstrates to your openness to listening to everybody and the diverse views that we all have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alisa. Thanks for being with us tonight. Appreciate your time.
Next up, we have Kate Sheehan. You can unmute in three minutes.
Thank you, Sarah. My name is Kate Sheehan, and I live in Centreville. As a young professional who is passionate about and deeply involved in creating, helping to create a sustainable economic future for our town and the entire Cape, I am here to speak up for housing for locals. I'm asking the council to move forward with making it easier to build and rent accessory dwelling units. I ask that you oppose any efforts to slow down the creation of diverse housing in Barnstable at a time of a housing crisis that everyone has talked about this evening, including a proposed citizen zoning task force that would duplicate the work of the planning board and delay needed housing options. I am opposed to this task force because it will slow or dilute not only the ADU proposal, which I do support, but other needed zoning reforms in a town, in a time of this critical housing crisis. I've heard it said that those two are not related, but I'm not sure how that can be, as Lisa just mentioned, because the petition literally references ADUs multiple times. And I think it's very easy to have an opinion about proposals for other people's housing when you're comfortable in your own home. But as has been stated by many others this evening, working people who are raising families and doing the work of civic engagement every day don't have time often for task forces. And again, this is the forum. So I have questions about how this forum, how this task force would work, who would comprise it? Would the members of- Would the members of the task force have to take classes on zoning policy? Would it pull town staff from other important housing and planning projects, such as the local comprehensive plan? How would the petitioner, who I understand is now on the planning board, serve on both? If his spouse, the other lead petitioner, is on it, is that a conflict of interest? Is this even legal under the state zoning law? These are just some of my questions. You, the elected officials for the villages, already represent our interests on zoning. And there is language in the proposal that I find particularly distressing. It suggests that zoning determines the character of our community. If that were to be true, what a very sad statement it would be. The vibrant character of our seaside community is determined by the individuals and families who live here year-round, who own businesses, who create art, music, literature, who engage in the daily work of community building and civic engagement. Generations of guests are not attracted to our zoning. They come because this place is so special. That I think we can all agree on. But if the people who make Cape Cod and make Barnstable what it is do not have appropriate housing options, then the quality of our town will be irreparably changed. Creating a task force for the purpose expressed is a solution in search of a problem. Meanwhile, we have a critical housing shortage, and we are not early in that process. We cannot afford to wait any longer to address it, nor do I believe that it should be via a group in which people who already own homes speak for the people like me who want to buy but can't in this market and don't have time, because we are working people, to sit on a task force that further delays finding tenable solutions to the real problem. True civic engagement is very necessary. I think we all can agree on that as well. It's hard work, but it cannot be achieved in an exclusive manner. And I think that Amanda covered that really well earlier. I hope that the council will oppose any measures that will slow housing creation, including a zoning task force that duplicates the work of the planning board. And finally, I just want to thank the council very much for the excellent work that you do to represent our community so well and for having so much patience with this process this evening. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sheehan. Really appreciate your time.
Next, we have Carlos Barbosa. Carlos, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to apologize for the language here, for the English situation here, my handicap. But I want to let you know that I'm part of the minority community in town. And this housing and zoning change and give the opportunity to create more housing, it's very important for my community. We are suffering right now of labor shortage in town because we cannot afford to have people come in and leave in this town. So I work in construction for the past 21 years here in town in Antucket. We are, my community, suffer a lot without a chance to buy or rent a house in town. So please consider any change that you can do to help us create more housing and help those people can afford a house. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barbosa. And please don't ever apologize for any language there.
I know my handicap. That's all.
We'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Next up is Martin McNeely. Martin, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. I am speaking to you tonight as a resident who is not in support of the proposed resident zoning task force. The idea that adding this advisory group under the planning board would benefit the majority of citizens in Barnstable is completely without merit and should be rejected by the town council. Clearly, every citizen has the right to speak and to be heard during public comment when the opportunity presents itself. However, just because some may feel that three minutes of public comment isn't adequate for you to get your point across doesn't mean that you can create a task force as a way to promote your personal opinions as being more valuable than others. I don't see how this task force would be in the town or the residents' best interest by adding another layer of bureaucracy to the local government. If a group such as this is approved, why would this stop with the planning board? How about a task force for all the boards and commissions in town? We could have one for the zoning board. We could have one for the Board of Health. We could have one for the open space committee. And we could go on and on, even one for the town council itself. You thought your meetings were long now. This petition appears to just be another attempt by a special interest group looking to promote their views under the guise of supposedly unbiased group of citizens from the seven villages of Barnstable. As I see it, these residents, like all residents in our town, have a couple of options moving forward. You can continue to speak at public comment for three minutes or pursue an appointment or an election to one of the town boards, commissions, or to the council itself. The petition also indicates that the local village associations could appoint a member from their village to this task force. Why, like in my case, would the Martins Millers Village Association suddenly be given the authority to point a resident to this task force? Do the civic associations now represent the majority opinion of the residents of their village? I don't believe that this is the case, although some residents do believe this to be true. Again, let's move on. This petition, in my opinion, does not have merit and should end here tonight with the town council. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Appreciate your time.
Next is Megan Newman. Megan, you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Welcome back, Ms. Newman.
I hope I'm successful this time.
Loud and clear. Go ahead.
You know, it's, I'm actually sort of glad that I was muted this past few minutes because, you know, I came in here thinking I had one opinion about this topic. And in listening to everybody over these, you know, hour and a half, two hours, I'm sort of more confused than I was. I think what has been so dispiriting to me is the lack of faith that people have in our town government to advocate for whatever their side is. You know, I was most persuaded by Marian Barbosa, who spoke so clearly and persuasively about how there seems to be a thumb on the scale when it comes to people who are not, quite frankly, in my position to show up at meetings, to advocate, have the money and the time and the resources to kind of push our own agenda. So actually, quite frankly, I don't know where I stand on this. You know, at first I thought, wow, a zoning commission sounds fantastic. You know, this 35-scutter thing has blown me away. All of a sudden, this thing was parked in our neighborhood. And, you know, before we knew it, the entire backyard of many people in this small community was about to change. So wouldn't it be great if there were people on board ahead of this that could have given us a heads up that this was about to happen? On the other hand, housing is desperately needed in this community. Absolutely. Does this particular development change the equation there? Absolutely not. So I've been listening to all of this stuff, and all I hear is a lack of faith in what our town councilors are meant to represent for us. And that makes me sad. And it also makes me want to be far more involved than I have been. So I'm going to stop talking now so that I can think this through. You know, quite frankly, I don't think another layer of bureaucracy is what is needed in this town. You know, and I do agree with Marian Barbosa and a number of other people who have spoken who say the people who have the largest agenda are the ones that are going to influence this conversation. And I want to figure out for all of us how we change that equation. And, you know, quite frankly, I don't have a clue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Thanks for coming back. Appreciate you sticking it out, your perseverance.
That is the end of the public comment for the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate you making all that happen. That was a lot to juggle. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. Now we will open to, excuse me, we close the public hearing, and now we would open council discussion, council access.
So I have a question, of course. So it's been said over and over again that the formation of this task force would slow down the ADU item. Can someone explain to me, A, if that's accurate, and B, if it is, how would that, how would it be delayed should this task force be formed?
Council Voga, if you want to take a crack at that?
Yeah, I will, because I think the argument goes that by embedding an additional layer of your bureaucratic consideration, you implicitly slow down the process. The problem is, I don't embrace that argument. Nor do I believe, as I understood Mr. Schulte when he spoke before this council, the last meeting, that he believes that. In fact, I think Mr. Schulte has said he favors ADUs. The irony of a lot of what I'm hearing, and I appreciate Ms. Newman's comments, in that, the irony is that, as I understand, the motivation by the Schultes and those with whom they are associated in bringing this forward is that they did not believe, as I've said before, that residents were given an opportunity for input on these issues until it was too late. Because there were discussions that were happening in other corridors where residents were not present, and therefore, they were concerned. And the reason I say ironic is that all of the people who are speaking and saying that, well, this is going to slow it down, we need ADUs, you're not embracing all of the communities. If it weren't for people like the Schultes, that's exactly what would have happened. That they would tell you that, in fact, there would not be ADU consideration, that there would be a landscape that was fertile for investors to come in, buy the properties. And so all of the people that are advocating for more housing would be at a loss because there would be no more additional housing. So that's a long-winded answer to a councillor's assilis question. But I think that's the way it goes. And I think that all they are saying is, I'm looking at the petition. There's a provision that says they want an advisory role in the planning board. If the council embraces this notion, the council can prescribe how they participate, but it doesn't have to necessarily slow down the process, nor do I believe the signatories to the petition want that to happen. And can I say one thing, as long as I've got it? The repeated references to people of color and indigenous communities, I find offensive. It's a nice soundbite, but it has no basis in that. Because in fact, if it weren't for people like the Schultes, those are the people who would be out because there wouldn't be any housing for those people. So it is counterintuitive to argue that these proposals that are being advocated are contrary to those people. In fact, the Schultes should be commended. And that's what I said before. They are actually advocating for what you want. But somebody else is disseminating information that you're buying into that I simply cannot, I cannot embrace. It does not resonate with me.
Thank you. I may be back. Vice President Schnapp.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would say that one of the reasons that people are concerned that the ADU has not been moving forward is because we've delayed having the ADU on the agenda for at least two months because of the residential task force petition that we received in early March. And the reality is that the conversation that is occurring, not just here among us, but outside and social media, on the radio, continues to point at various things that have come out of committees that the town council has created as somehow tainted or of special interest. And the ADU bylaw that is on today's agenda has been put into that category. So there has been a legitimate concern by a number of the people who spoke this evening that the ADUs would proceed with that sort of taint. What I'd like to bring to everyone's attention, and President Lebec already did earlier this evening, is that we have made a decision to sunset a number of the ad hoc committees that were created before I was elected to the town council. And a number of you were elected to the town council. They served a particular purpose. And we've decided that they no longer serve that purpose. They've done work. But I think that a lot of the arguments that are in the petition tonight really go back to the concerns that some of these committees that we have had have been problematic. And I would actually agree that there were some problems and challenges with those committees, namely that they didn't have the sort of predictability and constancy that some of our other regulatory boards do. As I think it was Rob Brennan mentioned, and maybe David Houghton. Planning and zoning changes are very prescribed under state statute, you know, 40A. So there's public hearing requirements so that everybody knows what is going to be discussed. And there's a process of referral, and it comes back to the council. Some of our ad hoc committees didn't even have regular meeting times, and they were often scheduled at the convenience of the town councilors that were on those committees. No ill intent, but that was just sort of a reality. Because meeting postings for our committees only require a 48-hour notice, one could argue that sometimes the public wasn't fully informed in a large enough amount of time to know what was on those agendas. So I understand some of the frustrations that people were feeling about some of the issues that were discussed in these ad hoc committees. In recognition of that, the zoning and regulatory town council committee will no longer exist after June 30th. We are going to rely on the conventional ways that we usually discuss zoning by returning to the planning board as our primary committee that considers zoning changes. We are also embarking on a very, I think, important local comprehensive plan for the entire community to participate in these kind of questions. I mean, really honing in on the civic engagement. I think Director Jenkins pointed out the number of ways they are going to do that. And a number of the people who commented this evening, I think we're very much in favor of that. I think the concern about moving to a residential zoning task force is that it narrows the field and it creates yet another committee that sort of is going to be floating among our other committees and doesn't have sort of the substantial staff support and opportunity for full public engagement. So even though I recognize that there was frustration in how things might have been done before, I think we're at a precipice of doing things in a different way that really engages our community and that that moving toward a residential task force as presented in this petition would be a diversion from that. And so I will be voting against it. It is not against the petitioners. Again, I think that they're, they have good intent. But I think that it doesn't, it isn't as comprehensive as we need to be going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Schnapp. Council Hebert, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I don't think that anybody can question my concern for home housing, everyone, and everyone to have a place to call a home. I've served as, on the possible housing authority as a commissioner. I have a long history of working on housing. I've helped to house and support thousands of individuals. When we look at the question before us tonight, When we look at, uh, the question before us tonight, this whole thing didn't fall out of the sky. I can look, I would like to say, I can look in the eyes of every one of my fellow councilors, uh, but I'm going to say, I see you in your square. In that, we have done a magnificent job to the individual, every individual on this council. And because we did our job, uh, and because zoning changes require, rightly so, a two-thirds vote of the entire council, uh, before we can change anything in the zoning. As long as I'm a councilor in the town, uh, I would fight to make sure that never goes away. It's not as simple as the simple majority. The history is very, very clear in why we're having this discussion tonight. Was it that people have nothing else to do, or they want to form a committee? I'm going to go back to painful period of time of the SDRs when I was the president, and the zoning and regulatory committee at the time. I had recommended that the committee consider adding two or three residents to the committee, and that was rejected by the council. And I said, so let's see what happens. The citizens spoke at every opportunity, at comment, asking for some very specific things. They wanted guidelines, they wanted enforcement, and they wanted some very specific things, like make sure we don't create a hotel in the neighborhood. Let's have a minimum amount of night, um, what, you know, a maximum amount or a minimum amount of night, um, minimum amount of how many, uh, SDRs you can have. The four or five things that the public wanted never, ever came out of that committee. The one thing that did come out of the committee was, the public spoke and spoke, and finally, the town management hired somebody, um, a vendor to register all, uh, SDRs and all rentals in the town, and to start to make sure that they know the guidelines, and there was a hope for enforcement here. So then it came to the, to the council, and the council sent it to planning. The, the public again spoke at, for these three, four, five points that were important to them. They spoke and spoke to the planning board, and not one of those items was changed. The exact thing that we sent to planning came from planning back to the council. I kept saying, trust the council, trust the council. And for the months that we dealt with it, and if you remember, there was procedural problems, and we had to send it from the council back to planning, planning sends it back to us, and we pick it up again. But we could not vote on the SDR, on either the bylaw, um, either one of those bylaws, because intrinsically, we knew that the concerns of the general public had not been resolved in either one of those items. So we attempted to take vote, and we were not able to pass either one of those bylaws. I believe strongly, had two or three members of the public been on the regulatory zoning committee, what would have come to the council from the, that subcommittee, uh, would have ended up being approved within two men, two meetings of, of the council. But because that step didn't take place, there was an uncomfortableness on the part of this town council. And again, my respect for every member of our council is without question. I thank you, I applaud you, kudos to you, because we did our job. And that's, though, why we find ourselves in this situation. We all want the ADUs. I haven't heard one person talk against the ADUs. It's, it's common sense that we have the ADUs. But it's also common sense to make sure that ADUs don't turn into, um, a landfall of, for somebody wants to do an SDR, and we made provisions for that. So we have heard the public on this, uh, and I think the public knows that we're going to vote appropriately. But I just want to really be clear that this didn't happen overnight. It was the public feeling, the group of the public, people from their neighborhood, who felt that they were not listened to, and were not heard. It might have been listened to, but they were not heard in the zoning and regulatory committee. There's no reflection against the leadership of the committee or the committee itself, except that they felt, and I believe, they were not heard, nor were they heard at the planning board. That's why we ended up where we are today. So I know that we're going to continue to do the right thing, and I had only thought that tonight we were really going to vote whether we're going to further the discussion on this, but apparently, we're voting quite differently, listening to President Lebec, uh, explanation of what we're doing tonight, so, um, thank you.
Okay, so just for a, a clarification. The, the petition, or the, well, well, again, we graciously, uh, we accepted to, behave in a manner close to a petition, although it didn't have the wet signatures. So, and, and that petition is to listen to the merit of moving forward on a residential zoning task force. That's pretty simple. So I, 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 um, and I, I've actually, I've reached out to every council and asked and, and mentioned that this is what we're going to do, and this is when we were going to do it. So it's, uh, to see there was any confusion of exactly what we were going to do today, you know, um, I'm not quite sure where that comes from.
Mr. President, I think we need a motion to go past 11 o'clock.
Yes, we do. Why don't we do that first?
I move that we move past 11 o'clock?
I'll second.
Look, move to a vote, please.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Donacy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Backless?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Dagwon?
Yes.
Rap Crisetti?
Yes.
Paul BS.
Council Hebert, follow-up?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we're, I, I'm, I'm glad I didn't talk to anybody before. I just read what, what was in a packet from, um, Attorney Nova, that said that we, because we didn't want to break open meeting law as it was advertised, um, that we were only going to be voting on whether, if you will, that the citizens had a right to this petition. As I see it written, I can see where, where we, um, have also added, um, that, uh, we, we could be questioning whether they would establish a resident zoning task force. So I, I can see both points here, um, but I'm only responding to what I believe uh, uh, our legal department was suggesting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Attorney Nova, clarification?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to clarify that it's not whether they have a right to have a petition. What you're voting on is simply whether what they have proposed has merit. That's what, a yes vote is their proposal, what they're asking for, has merit. And if you all vote that it has merit, then you would have to subsequently decide if you want to take any other action as a result of that. You're not voting to approve what they're asking for, you're just voting on whether you think it has merit.
Council Hebert, just to make sure all your questions are answered.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. President. Thank you very, very much, and I appreciate the clarification from Attorney Nova. So, um, just so I'm, everybody's very, very clear on this. I don't believe that the task force is going to disturb the town uh, or, or the citizens, uh, all that well. So, uh, my, my thought was that if we proceeded, that we would have a conversation, workshop, whatever the leadership wanted to do, uh, to see how they could be more effective. And I have my own personal opinion on how they'd be more effective. Um, I am going to vote yes on this, simply to say that they, I see the merit of them trying to, from their, wanting to engage, uh, thi- this way. I, you know, for what it's worth, uh, this is not to be offensive to my fellow councilors, but to the citizens, I encourage their engagement. They have, and I see merit in what they're trying to do, and that's how I'll be voting. Thank you very much.
Council Stein Hilber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a step back here, and I don't want to get into a rehash of last year with, um, you know, the zoning advisory, committee, or what went on with the planning board, but there's numerous steps in the public process, and the council was getting that public comment for, for months, and, and the council was attempting to respond to that public comment and those concerns with minimum nights, with maximum leases, with, uh, short-term rental caps. I myself made a motion for minimum nights and maximum leases, trying to put limitations on things, and the council voted me down. So to say that we, that they weren't heard, there's a, there's a long process. So they were heard in that process, and at the end of the day, uh, the council did not act, act on it. So a lot of that was from listening to the public, so we moved on, and now we're collecting data, and some point next year, two years, who knows? Maybe it'll come back before us, but I just wanted to kind of make that point that the, the council was hearing that, and the council, or some of us, were trying to respond to those concerns. As far as the petition, I just can't escape the redundancy of this, um, in listening to both sides. I mean, that, that is just, it's just a glaring redundancy. Um, we just went through sunsetting, um, you know, numerous advisory committees, uh, which, you know, function similar to what they're proposing in an effort to, you know, streamline, to focus on, you know, a local comprehensive plan, which is a great opportunity to do what they're talking about. Um, and it's not, you know, an obstacle of Centerville thing, it's not a Hyannis thing, it's a all of Barnstable, uh, comprehensive plan, reaching all types of people, everyone that lives in our town, and that's critical. And I think that's where the focus should be, and that's where I think we can get a lot of this great citizen engagement. We heard about it earlier, and that's really where this focus of citizen engagement, that's, that's where the focus should be. We shouldn't be working on a local comprehensive plan and having another task force. It, it, it really doesn't make any sense. It, it's so redundant. And a couple of other quick points. I know a lot of this petition came out of the concerns with the zoning advisory committee, but in the back of that petition, there is a note that says that they couldn't, they couldn't find any items that came out of that committee that ultimately got voted in from the town council. So, why is that? And that's because it's a public process, a robust one. Um, so things get amended, the planning board, they get amended at the council, or they don't get voted on. Um, so you can't, on one hand, say, there's no public involvement or voice, and then say, well, that committee didn't, nothing ever came to be. That's because of the public process. The, the, the council and, and the, and, and the boards responded to that public process, and, and Council Bogdan made a great point, with ADUs, that, you know, the concerns expressed, you know, months ago, um, through a public process of workshops and all the public comment that we've gotten here, you know, were, were addressed, the, the terms, because terms that this group was pushing this petition, uh, were addressed and seemed to be on the same page, page of people. So again, the public process has worked, so I just can't, and I appreciate him bringing that up, just kind of highlighting how redundant it is. Um, so I just can't escape that redundancy feeling with this, so I, I'll be voting now.
Council Bogdan?
Yeah, very briefly. I actually a- agree with, um, elements of everything that, uh, Counselor Schnep, Counselor Stein Hilber, and frankly, Counselor, Counselor Hebert said more eloquently than me. Um, at the end of the day, I, I think the petition has merit, I will vote yes, but I do believe that, and I think this is implicitly, it's implicit in what Counselor Stein Hilber just said, their objective has, has been served. Um, to the extent that they were concerned that they were not being heard, and there were other factions that were, and if those factions were the ad hoc committees or the subcommittees in which they did not feel they have a voice, I agree with Counselor Schnep. The sunsetting of those kind of means that everybody has an equal voice at the table. So, you know, I will vote yes, because I think the petition has merit, but do I think the task force is necessary? I do not.
Appreciate that. And obviously, you know, the, you know, the, the subcommittees, you know, it's out in the open now, too, in a lot of ways, you know, became lightning rods, you know, places where initially, they were supposed to be places that there would be more public engagement. It was another bite at the apple, but for whatever reason, and I, and again, and I know, um, I don't think it was intended that way, I really don't, and I don't, and I think COVID had a lot to do with it. I think, um, having to adjust to living in Zoom land had a lot to do with it. I saw that it, it worked much better when there was, um, eating in person. So, um, but at the same time, you know, the, this, the staff, you know, the, the pull on resources that we, we really need right now to move forward with this local comprehensive plan, and again, take that deeper dive, um, I just, uh, Council Schnep and I, and, and again, to, um, Vice President Schnep's, you know, when we first started talking about this, you know, we just, Counselor Schnep recommended to me, let's keep a, a close eye on how effective these committees are moving forward. So, and so we're effective more than others, and we still need to work on all these things as councilors, you know, on an individual basis, and so, anyway, thank you for that. Any other comment? Council Rap Crisetti, please.
I, I'm going to defer to Counselor Dagwon first, because she, she's been waiting, and then I'll, I can go after her.
Thank you very much. Council Dagwon, sorry about that. I missed you.
I'm sorry, I'm the one on the phone here. Um, and thank you, Counselor, uh, Rap Crisetti, for, uh, noticing that I had been waving my hands here furiously. Um, thank you, Mr. President. I, I wanted to respond as well to this. Um, uh, I realize, m- many, many years ago, we established the, uh, a comprehensive, uh, financial advisory committee, something similar to what this group is trying to talk about. At this point right now, I feel as though, uh, and I'm going to vote against it, even though I feel that task force, uh, especially, um, community task force absolutely have lots of, uh, things to give, and it's a lot of merit to that. And the reason why I will not be voting on it, because many of the things I heard tonight had to do with time. And tonight, we're going to take time to vote on this on the merit only. Then we're going to come back, and we're going to look at it again and vote on somewhere down the line, we're going, this is going to come back again, and vote on the task force itself. Then we'll probably have to meet again to try to establish, uh, the charge or the direct, you know, how, how it's going to move forward. So for those reasons, I, I will not vote in favor of this tonight. And I, I think, when I looked at all the people called, that was a big issue, and, um, for those two reasons, I, I, I will be voting again. However, I think this was, uh, well-meaning, um, this task force, and I was in favor of it at, at the time, absolutely in favor, and I'm always going to be in favor of, of community engagement. But I didn't, did not feel it was race bait. You know, Counselor Bogdan spoke about that, and as an African-American woman, I did not feel that way when I heard about this proposal at all, and I wanted to clear, say that. We need to, however, I feel that at times, we need to reach beyond who we're comfortable with. When we begin to establish new initiatives and new groups, we really have to look around our community and see what we see and find ways to, to engage, uh, others that aren't like ourselves, that don't look like ourselves. I'm, I'm a person of color on this council, but I reach to all of you. You don't look like me, and you're not African-American, but I make an attempt to reach, you know, towards you, to get, so you'd get to know me and get familiar with me, and me get to know you as well. And we have a whole group here on the Cape that's been here for centuries. The Native Americans, the Cape Verdean, the Portuguese, the African-Americans, and now we have immigrants. And I'm, and, and I'm not against immigrants. And I'm, and, and I'm not against immigrants. I'm, I, for me, I reach out to everyone. But you have a group that's been here for centuries and we look throughout our town and, and, uh, our country, and they're not brought into the fold. And so right now, race is a big issue in the country. We can't, you know, overlook that right now. And I think some of the comments you're getting is because some people are feeling that way. But you can't be racist and talk about, you know, race. You can't be racist towards other people. It feels as though they're, they're being racist towards you. You have to be open to, to everyone. And so, uh, I, I would just say that as we move forward, um, that we do consider just looking beyond who we are, feel, feel comfortable with. And I make that effort on, on the council to feel comfortable, to make others feel comfortable with me. I was on the zoning board. And I learned a lot from the zoning board. One of the things I learned that the zoning is piecemeal here in the town. I had no idea how piecemeal it was. And you have people who, despite how we think it looked and what we want to do, aren't going to allow you to, to, to change things around them. And we can't take people's property by eminent domain and because we want to do this and we want to bring this through. That's tough to do. So I learned a lot about, um, zoning myself, but, uh, you know, the, the current boards had the expertise. They had the history of, of zoning and how all these areas got piecemeal like they are. And they had the experience. And I think that's where it should lie, um, at, at this point. And, um, I, I'm going to stop right there. This, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dagewen. Counsel Rapusetti.
I, I promise I'll be brief, Mr. President. Um, and I appreciate all the comments by, by my fellow counselors. And as much as I, uh, agree with the petition to encourage, uh, a, a more diverse and, and more representative group to, uh, to have the conversation of zoning in the town of Barnstable. Um, and I, and I do believe I, I would support that the petition has merit, but I would not support forming, uh, a, a separate task force. Um, I, I think, uh, through our planning, uh, board and perhaps subcommittee of the planning board, uh, which is made up of volunteers from the community. Um, and, uh, I think that, that's the route to take, uh, with regards to zoning. And, you know, the conversation's already taking place about the local comprehensive plan. And we need, uh, uh, more representation through that process from all across the town, from all parties, uh, of the town. So um, I will support the merits of the petition, but I would not support any further discussion regarding a task force. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bear with me. I've had some, uh, difficult, uh, connections tonight. Kind of rounding back to what at first Counsel Star mentioned, and then even Counsel Hebert. I am, uh, a little confused in, in terms of what I'm reading here, but, but let me, I'll follow through. So it indicates that item number 2021171, as I read it, it states that we're voting on the merits of a citizen's request to establish a residential zoning task.
That's what it says.
Right? So we're voting on the merit. Yet the resolve states that it establishes this task. So this and its delivery seems a little unclear in its nature, but with that said,
Let me, let me just, let me just say it one more time. Okay? We just say it one more time. The petition came for, and the petition wants us to create a residential zoning task force.
I understand.
How the step-by-step process goes is that first, we vote if it has merit. If the council votes that it has merit, the council is saying that it is in favor of moving forward a residential zoning task force. And that now is, it is in my, in Vice President Schnep's hands to form that task force, to bring it back to you for ratification. So there is no other, there's no gray. You're either voting the task force merit up or you're voting the task force merit down.
Thank you.
Vote that it has merit. That means you're wishing that we want to move forward with the zoning task force. That's what I understand. Counsel, I turn it over. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, no, you're correct that it is a vote on the merits of what is being proposed. And so a yes vote is that it has merit, a no vote is that it does not have merit. Even if you all vote yes, that does not mean that you have to take any further action. That is a separate item to be considered if that's what you all want to do. But simply saying that it has merit does not actually approve what they're asking for, and it doesn't compel you to take any further action, although you're ab- absolutely free to do so if you wish to.
May I follow up?
Yep.
Follow up? Thank you. Uh, I'm going to defer to, uh, my fellow counselor, Deb Dagewen. Uh, you know, I, first of all, I, I, I just want to thank all of the, all of the, uh, residents that took the time to participate and certainly the petitioners. Um, and I'd like to thank my fellow counselors. I believe we're always looking to the residents of the town for input, input. Uh, the majority of input that I receive from the residents, it doesn't occur in the three-minute council and committee meeting. These, uh, the, the information comes to me with conversations that come from the street, from the coffee shop, workplace, specific associations and so on. I'm thinking that if the petitioners for this task force wish to, then they should go forward and create a task force representing all segments of the town, the towns' villages. I don't know, possibly it could be called the Town of Barnstable Civic Association. This association, should it be created, I'm sure would be recognized by all of, you know, my fellow counselors, the town staff, just as they do any other group and what they've always done. They'll be recognized. Whether it be a village civic association, a school association, a youth committee, fundraising group, or any other group or resident that comes before any member of the town is employed. If the petitioners have the desire to, enough to create this town-wide group, they should create, and I will enthusiastically attend. This group, task force or association, it will be received and considered just like all the other groups and petitions that come before the town, just like it's always. My opinion to create another committee to be incorporated into the town code, it makes no sense. With that thought process, we could then turn around and should we bring all civic associations in the, in, in every village? And put them in as well? We'll create another whole section? Not trying to be fresh. The task force, its written statement is to be an advisory body, the planning board, the planning department, and it wishes to be included in all future zoning issues. It's basically asking for a void. And I believe that we all try and do all of those things. We listen, talk to people, and, and we try to make decisions for the best, in the best interest of the town. In this way, I just feel to see how the creation of another entity, have it written into the town code, whether it be not tonight, at a future date. I think, uh, uh, it's, it's irrelevant. It's not necessary. And I guess to quote the, the opening statements of this, although I believe in engagement, I do not see the merits of this request. And I, I cannot vote for it. Thank you for your ear.
Just one more piece of clarification, attorney over. And, and I'm not trying to get you to say what I want you to say, quite honestly, but just because I'm a little confused. We're voting on the merit of this petition. But we don't necessarily have to act on it.
That is correct.
But if we vote as a council on the merit and don't act on it, and we vote in favor of it, and, but we don't act on it, what does that say? Aren't we saying to the general public that we think you have merit? We think you have a point, but we're not going to do anything about it? I mean, I guess that's not a legal decision. Maybe I have, I maybe that's my own question to myself.
No, I mean, I think it's kind of interesting, but the way the charter is written, and again, it's the group petition section of the charter, which doesn't technically apply, but that we're following for this, um, for this process, it says the council will take a vote on the merits of the petition. That is not, you will take a vote to approve the petition. So that is the distinction. And I guess it, it is a two-step process where you first decide if you think it has merit. And then you either say, well, you know, as some of you have said tonight, it has some merit, but I don't want to take any further action. Um, and again, you're not compelled to do that. So the vote is not a vote to approve this, this proposal. It's, do you believe it has merit? And then if, if the council says yes, then you can decide whether you do want to do anything more about that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other counsel, Counsel Steinheber, please.
I, I would just say that they're one and the same. If you think it has merit, then you want it. If you don't think it has merit, then you don't want it. And, and what Counsel Dagewen was getting to, you know, how many, how many meetings are we going to have till midnight talking about this? I mean, it should be a one-and-done thing. You either, you either want it or you don't. Merit, yes. Merit, no. It, that's, that's how I read it.
Counsel Hebert, please.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Mr. President. And I, I clearly agree with Counsel Steinheber. And, you know, so let me be frank. I don't think that there's any hope or make any difference whether they form a group or you have another group, uh, that's going to, uh, listen any different because they won't have any, any authority to change it. And so several people spoke tonight at a public comment that said, where I think the, um, you know, the effort needs to be made. If you, um, want to participate, you know, if we're going to have certain planning boards, or, or, you know, you run for a board, you try to uh, get on a board and to represent your, your beliefs. Uh, or you run for the town council, uh, if you think that your representative is not truly representing you. So, uh, again, I am total agreement. I do not believe that, that the formation of the, this group as, as they're proposing is going to make much difference. I, I think it's going to still come down to individuals. Um, I, I'm voting yes on the merit of they took action, they, they, they did civic engagement. And that's what I want to say yes to. And I don't feel any obligation, uh, to, you know, promote that uh, outside of, um, saying, good job. Thank you.
Counsel Rapusetti.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to vote on the item.
Motion to the floor.
Second that.
Yes.
You need to take a vote on that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's take a vote on that motion, please.
Counselors, Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Now.
Yes.
Shawnessy.
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No.
No. Starr.
No.
Steinheber.
No.
Axlus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Hal, um, Dagewen.
Yes.
Rapusetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Nine yes, three no.
Okay. Entertained a motion to to vote in on the, um, on the merits of a citizen's request to establish a residential zoning task force.
Second.
Okay. Town clerk, vote please, if it has merit.
Counselors. Neary.
No.
Schnep.
No.
Shawnessy.
No.
Starr.
No.
Steinheber.
No.
Axlus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Dagewen.
No.
Rapusetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levek.
No.
Five yes, seven no.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Great discussion.
I thought you had six yeses. Are you sure?
Yeah. Yeah, no.
I have, I have Axlus, Bogan, Clark, Rapusetti, and Hebert as five yes.
That was it. Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, excellent. Okay, moving on to, obviously it's late, so moving on to the next item. Counsel Axlus, if you could please, um, read into the record, item number 2021 dash 172.
Yeah, just bear with me as I get back to where I need to be here. All right. One, uh, 2021172?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, this is new business, item number 2021 dash 172, transfer order in the amount of $302,803.66 from Town Council Order 2016 dash 098 to Town Council Order 2021 dash 175 for the purpose of funding the Water Pollution Control Division's fiscal year 2021 pump station rehab, really rehabilitation project. Uh, may be acted upon on roll call majority, as read, as written.
Second.
Yeah, first and a second, and Director Santos?
Good evening, good evening, Mr. President and members of the town council. Dan Santos, Director of Public Work. On April 22nd, 2021, bids were opened for the Water Pollution Control Division's fiscal year 21 Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. Favorable bids were received for the base bid and three of the four bid alternatives. The third bid alternate is for an evaluation of the sewer force mains for the Old Colony Pump Station, the largest pump station in town. The existing appropriation does not have sufficient funds to award this work. However, the backup generator replacement project at the Water Pollution Control Facility was completed in 2018 under Town Council Order 2016 dash 098. Currently has a remaining unspent balance of $302,803.66. Sewer pump stations are a critical portion of the municipal sewer system with high consequence of failure. The Old Colony Pump Station is the largest pump station in the town, pumping about approximately 700,000 gallons per day of sewage to the water pollution control facility. The sewage is pumped approximately 1.75 miles through a single 16-inch and 20-inch asbestos cement force main constructed in 1956. Assessment of this force main had been scheduled for 2023. However, we did include it as a bid alternate in this year's program to potentially understand the condition of this important infrastructure sooner and to possibly realize cost saving. The bid pricing received for this force main assessment work was over $100,000 less than our engineers estimate and therefore will be more cost-effective to complete as part of this current contract. After completion of the generator replacement project, funds under Town Council Order 2016 098, there remains 300, $302,803.66 of unexpended funds. Project was financed with a bond issue. Therefore, these remaining funds are expected, unexpected bond proceeds. The town must use them for another capital project for which it could borrow funds for a similar length of time or longer and cannot allow them to close to the enterprise funds reserves or use them for operating costs. This project qualifies as an allowable use of these funds. This project qualifies as an allowable use of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. For the rationale, any, uh, council discussion questions? Counselor Rap Crisetti, please.
I guess I would have, uh, the question, why was there over three hundred thousand left in the, uh, the previous item?
Um, after we had, um, finished design and bid the project and completed the project, uh, it, it came in lower than we had originally anticipated.
Wow, quite a bit, too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Snapp.
Yes.
Shawnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Axlus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Fabia.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to our next item, Councilor Bogan, if you could please read into the record, item number twenty twenty-one dash one seven three.
Item twenty twenty-one dash one seven three is a transfer order in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the Public Works Department operating expense budget for the purpose of funding watershed modeling. This is a roll call majority, uh, as written.
Second.
First and a second, rationale, please.
Thank you. Due to vacancies in salary positions throughout the fiscal year in the Department of Public Works, the department currently has approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars of unencumbered salary fund. The department proposes to access a portion of the projected savings to fund additional watershed modeling work to assess nutrient management scenarios in the Three Bays watershed. This request, if approved, will reduce the estimated amount of unexpended fiscal year two thousand twenty-one appropriations that would be turned back to the general fund reserves at the close of the fiscal year and become part of the town's free cash. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council discussion question? Not seeing any, oh, come, sorry, Councilor Stark, apologize.
Well, thank you, sir. Um, so, um, Mr. Santos, is this for, um, more monitoring, monitoring wells, or what?
No, this is, uh, Counselor, this is for modeling. Uh, we SMAST, um, yeah, School of Marine Science and Technology, uh, UMass Dartmouth, they do our modeling work for the CWMP, and we are asking them to do additional modeling runs, uh, to look at various scenarios for alternative innovative septic systems and how, uh, applying them across different watersheds might impact, um, our meeting water quality standards.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stark. Any other council of questions? Not seeing, or move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Shawnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Axlus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snapp.
Yes.
Fabia.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for being so late, I really appreciate it, Director Santos.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Okay, moving on to our next item of business, Vice President Schnapp, please, item number twenty twenty-one dash one seven four.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, refer to Planning Board, item number twenty twenty-one dash one seven four. Amending Article fourteen, Chapter two forty, Section one twenty-eight of the zoning ordinance to add a definition for accessory dwelling unit, ADU, and dwelling unit, and revise the definition of dwelling, single family, and add Article five, Chapter two forty, Section forty-seven point two, accessory dwelling units to the zoning ordinance.
Second.
First and a second. Um, this is first read, I'm actually referring to the planning board, move to some of both, please.
Councillors. Starr.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Axlus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snapp.
Yes.
Shawnessy.
Yes.
Fabia.
Excellent, thank you, and staying with Vice President Schnapp, please, item number twenty twenty-one dash one seven five.
Thank you, this is an item of new business, referring to the planning board. Item number twenty twenty-one dash one seven five, amending Article fourteen, Chapter two forty, Section one twenty-eight of the zoning ordinance to revise the definition of accessory dwelling unit, and amending Article five, Chapter two forty, Section forty-seven point two C four to allow ADUs with greater than nine hundred square feet by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
First and a second, vote please.
Councillors. Steinheber.
Yes.
Axlus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snapp.
Yes.
Shawnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Fabia.
Excellent. Moving on to our last item of business, um, Councilor Clark, please read item number twenty twenty-one dash one seven six.
Thank you, President Leveque. This is new business, may be acted upon with a roll call majority. Agenda item twenty twenty-one dash one seven six. Resolve accepting the fishware application from Nantucket Sound Fishwares Incorporated to Kurt Martin, President of the Nantucket Fishwares Incorporated.
Second. Thank you.
First and a second, and we have Director Lawson with us to give us the rationale. You're muted, Director Lawson.
Thank you, uh, good evening, uh, Councillors Derrick Lawson, Director Maria environmental affairs. Uh, Nantucket Sound Fishwares has operated fishwares in the town of Barnstable for over thirty years. Mr. Kurt Martin, President of Nantucket Fishwares, last renewed the two fishware permits in two thousand sixteen. The applicant is again seeking to renew permits to the two existing sites in Nantucket Sound. The permit is for a five-year period. Uh, I just share my screen with you quickly. Uh, hopefully you could all see that. I just want to give you, uh, kind of an indication on where these fishwares are located. Uh, this one over here is just off of Seaview Ave, uh, near Wayano, uh, Club. And then this one right here is kind of off of Squaw Island Road, uh, kind of equal to the, uh, Pianist. These are not to scale, I just wanted to give you an indication on where they are. Um, the exact coordinates, uh, will be kept here at the Marine Environmental Affairs Office at eleven eighty-nine Finney's Lane, Centerville, if anyone is interested. Uh, the wares are typically installed in late April, uh, into early May and operate until the end of June when they are removed from the water. Uh, typically the wares are worked every day, weather permitted. Um, the wares are posted net variety and do not, uh, have floats or bottom anchors. Uh, there is a five, excuse me, there is a fifty dollar fee per year per ware, which would result in five hundred dollars over the five-year permit period. Uh, Marine and Environmental Affairs, uh, supports the applicant's request, and, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you, Director Lawson. Counselor, uh, excuse me, Vice President Schnapp.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question out of curiosity, what, what do they usually catch?
Um, the, like recently, uh, as today, I know they offloaded squid, um, later in the season, scup, uh, maybe some Minhaiden or, or Pogies, whatever you want to call.
And the timeframe from mid-April to June is relative to what species are they're able to catch?
Yeah, as the, as the water warms up a bit, they'll get into different species.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clark.
So, um, so, uh, Mr. Lawson, why, so tell me, what's the difference between state waters and town waters? Why?
Well, uh, this is, we work, uh, very closely with the Commonwealth, uh, Division of Marine Fisheries on this. Uh, this application is approved by the town council, and then we forward it to the Commonwealth Division of Marine Fisheries, and they, they actually are the ones that are monitoring, uh, the license itself. Uh, with it being so close to the, the, the coast, it's in coastal tide waters right off, uh, right offshore, very shallow waters. Uh, we're out there monitoring it as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, it seemed, I mean, if you, has, if anybody been to the beach recently in Craigville and, and seen the boats out fishing for squid? It's pretty amazing how many boats are out there every day. Um, but it, but it's an inshore, sus, at the moment, sustainable fishery, so I think it's a, it's a good thing, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stark, Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, President Leveque. Um, I did have a, uh, productive conversation with Director Lawson earlier today, but, um, two things I want to bring up. Uh, one, we spoke about the fee, whereas, uh, the, um, we're in Dennis, the town of Dennis, they get a fee of one hundred dollars a year for, for rear, we're. Um, then again, I did call Adam, and they don't charge at all. But, um, Bob Dunkinson, who lives in the town of Barnstable, said, no, maybe it's time we revisited that. So I'm just suggesting that as we spend a lot of money on our, um, comprehensive wastewater management program, that, um, maybe it's time to look at the fees and, uh, give it, give a little height to, uh, a non-resin who's a beneficiary of our clean waters on Nantucket Sound. And secondly, um, I asked, um, Director Lawson about any casualties regarding marine mammals, uh, that is, um, seals who get caught in the, um, we're netting, uh, so perhaps, um, through you, if you can just, uh, comment on that, please.
Uh, sure, um, yes, um, I, I have seen, uh, seals get caught up in wares before. Uh, they're after the, the same, um, you know, fish that the ware is collecting or, or, or catching. Uh, they do feed on that, so they are in and around that area. Uh, seals on the south side are definitely more prevalent than they have been in the past, and, and we definitely see them, uh, when we're out on patrol now, a lot more.
Can I, pardon me?
Yes.
Um, can I make a comment, too?
Um, uh, it would be up to Director Lawson if you, uh, wanted to entertain that, that loss.
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, sorry, um, I'm Lars, look, I'm Kurt Martin's significant other, he's, uh, sound asleep, having to get up, uh, bright and early. I, I do want to tell you, too, that the seals, they do swim in the net. Um, the, the biggest casualty of that is the fish that they eat, and the seals do swim back out, but, um, when they are calling the nets, and that's our stationary, so they don't move. When they call them, the seals will, um, swim right out and over whenever they are, are in the net. So I, I just don't want the counselor to think that, um, there are modalities in this fishery, because it's a very traditional fishery, it's probably, uh, one of the, the least impact on the environment that's out there.
Thank you, thank you for your input. Counselor Stark.
Actually, I think that the fish love wares, I mean, that the, the seals love wares, because they, they learn how to sit at, at the entrance.
They do the work for them.
Yes.
Very good. Counselor Clark, did you have any follow-up?
No, thank you very much for that opportunity.
I'll make sure on that. Any other council discussion? Not seeing any, or move to a vote, please.
Councillors. Axlus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snapp.
Yes.
Shawnessy.
Yes.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Fabia.
Okay, I think that's the last item of the day.
Yay!
Okay. Somebody's celebrating. With that, uh, any more to adjourn, please?
I'd like to move to adjourn the meeting.
I will check you.
First and a second, and if we could do, uh, a vote, please.
Councillors. Bogan.
Yes.
Callum, oh, excuse me, Clark.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Snapp.
Yes.
Shawnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheber.
Yes.
Axlus.
Yes.
Fabia.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Night, all.